Hello, everyone, and welcome to tonight's school committee meeting. We have a quorum. Matt Hunt will be here a little bit later. Mike Mazzoni is out due to a professional commitment. Alex, can you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
We have a consent agenda minutes from March 23rd and April 6th in vote to bills and payroll.
Make a motion and accept the consent agenda as read.
Second.
All right, motion made and seconded. Which one did I miss, the April 6th? Did I just have one?
Yes.
That's the one I missed, right?
Yeah.
All those in favor of the March 23rd?
Aye.
Okay, and then all those in favor of the April 6th?
Aye.
All right. We have two sections in the agenda for input from interested citizens, one now and one at the end. Is there anybody here, interested citizens, that would like to speak before school committee? All right, seeing none. We'll dive right into recognition. Student representative, Olivia.
So April's been kind of chaotic month for everyone because we're like winding down. It's the last couple of months. And so with that, the high school has prom this Saturday at Mechanics Hall with pitchers at the high school starting at 4:30. Then in the spirit of prom, with the help of Ms. Perry and other teachers at the high school, we had our annual drunk driving presentation, which was very moving. And the TV studio crew also made a PSA with the help of some teachers. But not all of the high schoolers can party all weekend long because, starting Monday, we have the two weeks of AP exams at the high school. The NHS banquet on May 2nd. The middle school went to Overlook Farm today, which was a really fun field trip when I went, so I'm assuming it's still really cool. They have math MCAS coming up, and it is still testing season, so Russell Street has fourth grade MCAS as well.
All right, thank you. We have a presentation for...
We do. Tonight is our second presentation of our Teaching in Excellence Award. We talked about the criteria last meeting, but I'm just going to mention a few things again. When the principal of each school is selecting a teacher that's representative of the criteria for this award, they look for somebody that represents the core values of our district, somebody who is committed to meeting the learning needs of all students and aspires to continually become better at what they do in the classroom, representing the school, or representing the district. They have a love of learning and instill that intrinsic desire to learn within the students that are in their charge. And as a district leader or superintendent, this is a time of year when we give these awards, and it's always with great pride that I call on the principals to introduce the recipient from each school. And it is really representative of all the fine teachers that we do have in our district. The decisions that the principals make each year are not easy. We're very fortunate to have a committed staff that is truly committed to using best and next practice and meeting the needs of all learners and ensuring that they have those pertinent skills that they need to be successful as they continue their lifelong journey. So having said that, at this time, I'd like to call on Dr. Harrington to introduce this year's recipient at the high school.
Okay, good evening. I'd like to do a little bit different from last year because of the setup of the room as I'd like to just sort of read some, share some remarks on behalf of the recipient this evening and then call her up so we can have her recognized by the school committee and the superintendent and receive her award. I just think it would be more comfortable for tonight's recipient. We are happy at Littleton High School to honor a veteran science teacher as the recipient of this year's Excellence in Teaching Award. She is an outstanding teacher, colleague, and role model. She has earned tremendous admiration among students who look forward to enrolling in her biology, AP biology, and AP psychology courses. She has also garnered great gratitude among alumni who later look back with appreciation for all the preparation she provided for rigorous science courses in college. A science department colleague and past recipient of this award recently shared the following comments about Cheryl. First, I think she is incredibly passionate as a teacher. She regularly expresses enthusiasm and excitement about new initiatives in her discipline, like flipping her classroom or things she has learned at workshops. Secondly, I think the high standards that she sets for her students ultimately give those students confidence and a sense of accomplishment. Cheryl Harrington is incredibly intelligent, and she has a very motivating way of expecting that same level of academic achievement in her students. Third, and I consider this to be her strongest attribute as a teacher, Cheryl is acutely aware of the importance of her work in producing informed, discerning, intellectually curious citizens. She's not just teaching students biology, she's using biology to teach students to be engaged citizens. Another LHS teacher and frequent collaborator praised Cheryl by saying, "I am a far better teacher for working with her." She added, "Cheryl often organizes field trips and brings in speakers to expose our students to the vast array of career options in biology." Another colleague shared observations from Cheryl's students over the years with the following words. Mrs. Harrington is that rare teacher whose knowledge and passion consistently shine through each and every moment in her classroom. Committed to her students' learning, she seeks to challenge them at their highest level of capability inside a very supportive environment. She has outstanding communication skills and uses a variety of teaching approaches, making certain that every student understands the material being presented. Mrs. Harrington is also accessible to her students, always making time outside of the school day to provide extra academic assistance and mentor students. To provide greater biological research activities for her students, she founded the Biobuilders Club, providing enriching opportunities for her students to hone their research and presentation skills and to help them further define their future career interests. Many of our students have chosen to major in the biological sciences and identify Mrs. Harrington as an influential factor in their career choices. Female students frequently identify Mrs. Harrington as a role model for them. They identify her as a highly intelligent scientist who could unquestionably hold an impressive position in private industry, but instead chose to share her passion for the study of biology as a teacher, and they are so very grateful that she did. Tonight, we confirm with confidence your strengths and skills in the classroom and your excellence as a teacher. This year's recipient of the LPS Excellence in Teaching Award at Littleton High School is Ms. Cheryl Harrington.
Get a picture of you, Kelly.
Oh, Steve. I'll get it. John, you gonna be in there?
Just go pretty, come up here.
Thank you.
Get her trapped in our little pen.
Thank you.
This is Daryl's.
Thank you.
There we go, one, two, three. Good, thank you.
I know it's... Yes, absolutely. Quickest picture I've ever seen. I did want to say that I am truly honored by this recognition, but it's the, my students and the families here in Littleton that make it a joy to come to work every day. I have the best job in the world. It's the toughest job that I've ever done. I've been, I was a research scientist ahead of time, but coming to work every day, seeing the students, interacting with the students, is why I do what I do. I have Olivia as a student. I absolutely love this, and I'm so fortunate to work here. Great staff, supportive administration, and the parents and students are just outstanding, so it's a joy to come to work every day. So I thank you for this honor, but I feel privileged to be here. Thank you.
At this point, the school committee would like to recognize and thank Alex Pratt for his four years of service to the town of Littleton and the school committee member. Although a somewhat brief tenure, there was no question that in the time he did serve, Alex's passion and commitment to public education was second to no one else's. While a member, Alex was instrumental in the debate and consideration of a wide range of issues and policies. In particular, he helped the committee in focusing energy and consideration on social and emotional learning, tuition-free full-day kindergarten, later start times for high school students, and vision budgeting. He was an integral part of the budget process as a member of the Budget Subcommittee and was particularly effective at creating and increasing public participation in school committee, on school committee matters. After winning his last two elections, Alex's decision against running a third campaign came as a little bit of a surprise to all of us, but it actually makes sense the more you think about it. He clearly has aims and ambitions that range well beyond Littleton. As a legislative aide right now on Beacon Hill, he's already busy working on legislation and public policy on a statewide basis, and he's working hard to wrap up his undergraduate studies. There is no question, in my mind at least, that this will be a very temporary departure from the public policy world, at least as an elected official, and that Littleton and the rest of the Commonwealth will be hearing from Alex again soon enough. So Alex, please come on up and accept this plaque from the committee as thanks for your hard work and dedication to the students' families and the town of Littleton. You want a few words at the microphone, or?
Sure, I got plenty of words.
Let's go say, "Be careful, buddy." Be careful.
All right, the big chunk of business tonight is the state of curriculum reports, part one.
Right, and we actually had the first part, so to speak, at our last meeting. We should have been, I think there's an air in the agenda.
I wasn't there, I missed it.
Have decided a couple of years ago to split them into two evenings, just so that we all had an opportunity to digest what was being said and also have an opportunity to celebrate all of our accomplishments. For us as a staff and admin team, it's important every year that we have an opportunity to talk about what our various departments are doing and keep the school committee apprised of all the good things that we're doing and also our communities. So I certainly welcome these opportunities to have staff come to the school committee meetings and have the opportunity to talk about all the things that we're doing to move education forward within our district. So thank you very much for coming tonight, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Jamien at this time.
Hi, I just wanted to introduce the speakers and the order in which they're speaking and set out the format is, as we did in the last presentation, at the last school committee meeting, each coordinator will come up and present their overview of their department, and then we'll let, we'll have questions at the end of each, of each presentation. The order in which the presenters are is follows. Mrs. Beth Morgan will be presenting on history and social science, grades six to 12. Then Mr. Dave Pescucci will present on English Language Arts, grades six to 12. Ms. Hillary Bridge will present on the Fine Arts, K to 12. Mrs. Val Finity will present on Science, grades six to 12, and I'll give a brief overview on grades K to five.
Hello. Oops. I was, anyway, there we go. Okay, so I wanted to open up with the opening slide, as you can see, has a variety of pictures from our students in action. Our department does all sorts of fun things and tries to make history and social sciences and all the electives really meaningful and come alive for the students. And what we have on this slide, we have two, the kind of, two left, upper-left corner, lower-right corner, some students were working on posters. In the middle, we have students for Student Government Day at the State House. Bottom left is Earthview, which is a program that Bridgewater State brings to our middle school, and it's really cool, like that's a big, huge inflatable globe, and you go, there's a presentation, the professor that brings it presents his work, and then they go inside, and it's really cool. I went to that assembly last year. And then in the upper right, we have some students engaged in this activity, Quizlet Live, which Quizlet.com is a flashcard studying website, and they have a really cool, fun feature that even my two cool-for-school eighth graders enjoy, which is Quizlet Live. It's a competition, and it puts kids in like random groups. You can make them, but it puts them in random groups, and it throws review questions up there, and they have to try to get the answer first, and you're, in your group, your answer may not be on your screen with a laptop or Chromebook, it may be on a teammate, so you kind of have to work together, and it's a lot of fun. So they're, the kids get really enthusiastic about that. So I wanted to give some info about what we did regarding the election, and last year we talked a little bit about that, it came up in my presentation, but you can see that up there, it just talks about going to the Edward Kennedy Senate. There's, they have simulations that the kids can go to that I've heard are great. My eighth graders watched a bunch of different CNN Student News episodes, and we talked about them. I tried to inform them about the Electoral College, and we looked at how the Electoral College had gone over, I forget what year it started, but it's really fascinating to see the colors change and to see the progression of elections in more modern times. And I realized, teaching this year, that some of my eighth graders will be voting in the next election, kind of in one of the classes, like, oh my gosh, you guys, some of you are 14. So that was exciting and just kind of mind-blowing because I never stopped to think about it, but that means every student at the high school, if they haven't already voted, will be eligible to vote in the next election, and I think that makes me think of our jobs. I always see it as important, but it's even more, it just seems even more important to make sure people are educated on how our country's going and different issues and ways to think about it and consider different viewpoints. And also, some, after the election, some students watched the divided states of America from frontline and analyzed that. I will also say the high school had a mock election run by the Law and Citizenship Class. There was a Google form. Students had the opportunity to vote over a four-day period and, once, and then there was a chart with the election, with the results. So the high school did a mock election of that. This slide just talks a lot about the different current events topics that our department has discussed with the students, and this is something that we all try to connect what we can of our state frameworks to what's happening in the world today. And just on Monday, there was an article in The Globe that said in Massachusetts, antisemitism has really risen in the past year, and Massachusetts, I was very surprised to read this, had the fifth-highest number of antisemitic incidents in the US. So are we reporting better? I don't know, but a lot of this is happening in schools across the nation. So this is not surprising, sadly. I mean, I teach about antisemitism that happened over a thousand years ago, but this is something that is really timely and I think is important. Like, I know in multiple classes this comes up, and when my students looked at some articles, some newspaper articles, and they had some really good ideas on how to stop it, so they, you know, like, just, I remember growing up, they had little announcements of, from people, just like kind of PSAs, and so it's like, they suggested having people who had experienced different antisemitic incidents or, you know, kind of say their story and kind of make it more real than just a newspaper article or a headline. So I'm sure a lot of our students have good ways to hopefully combat it in their lives as they get older and leave Littleton or go to college, and I think that we're, we focus a lot on thinking skills and like, how can we not be a part of this in the future? Because a lot of this happens because citizens choose to make certain decisions. I will say too, that the Law and Citizenship elective is kind of morphing into an American civics class to focus on how the government works and the history of why the US government works the way it does, and I think that's really useful to student, for students to know because they will be citizens their whole lives. They may not become historians, scientists, mathematicians, or whatever, but they're citizens forever, so this is, to me, really important. I'm obviously biased, but I think that this is, we have, in spite of being a non-MCAS subject and not in the headlines like, you know, STEM and STEAM and everything else, like, I really do feel like our work in our department is crucial to life, and, but like I said, I have my biases. I will say too, that myself and some other members of my department, the Massachusetts Department of Ed has a free civics literacy conference on May 8th, so at the Edward Kennedy Institute for the US Senate, so I'm looking forward to going to that. I've heard that it's really, it's really great, and so that will be, some of us will be attending that. And then next up, I have a small list, this is not the list, the complete list of what my department gave me, but a small list of some of our professional development and conferences that we've been to, and you can see there that there's a variety from required type subjects, the SEI, English Language Learners classes that we need to take, and then we have working on a department Google site for the middle school, ancient civilizations, Cold War, women spies in the background, that picture is Rose O'Neill-Greenhow, Confederate spy. And so we also had, there's been classes at Facing History in Ourselves, and about the Holocaust, Da Vinci, England, World War I, Adrian's Wall, Life on the Roman Frontier, which I know nothing about, so that would, I'm sure I'd find that interesting. But I do really think our department uses the tuition reimbursement money well. I probably say the similar things every year, but I think that's a great feature, a great part of working in Littleton, and I know I try to use as much of that, as that money as I can, year to year, and I think that the early release days, the building-based PD, our department's really using that time well, and it's great to have a chance to collaborate with your, our colleagues, so I really enjoy that, and I know other teachers do as well. And then lastly, it's just another small list of other noteworthy things that have gone on in the department. So lots of, the first three deal with the middle school, and lots of hands-on kind of experiential activities that the students have been a part of. Mr. Jabai does a great archaeology, archaeology dig every year with the seventh grade, and Ms. Fana Becker had some interesting activities for the sixth graders. And today, Olivia mentioned the Overlook Farm field trip. Mr. Jabai, Ms. Fana Becker, and I all chaffroned that, so that was fun to go on that field trip, and I hadn't been on it before, and it is a great field trip. You learn a lot, and it's just, it's interesting, and the kids cook meals, and they do the dishes. Round one, all the girls volunteered really fast in my group, and I was like, I don't know about this, and then we had the boys do round two. So, so, but it was great. It was really interesting, and it was a fun day. So also, there's some of the items mentioned in the presentation, I've talked about the PTA and LEF support, so we really appreciate that, and some things that did not fit on the slides. We had the Geography Bee on Littleton Public Access TV. We had an LEF grant for a visit by Holocaust survivor and survivor of Rwandan genocide, and the AP US History students are again working on local history projects. And I think all of this really tries to connect memorable experiences to our curriculum and what we're required to teach so that the students are, you know, it's really meaningful and sticking with them into the future. That's about it for me.
Questions, comments?
I was reading through the packet earlier today and looking at everything that you included, and I was just being so excited, and I just think this is excellent. I really like the way that you embed the critical thinking with the real present-day examples, and you dive into a multitude of issues that students in Littleton and this particular community might not always see every day versus if they were living in a different community. And so I really like that we're giving our students those opportunities to explore the world outside of Littleton and the world from a global citizenship perspective, so I think that's excellent. And I know that at the high school, the social sciences department is one of the most prominent. And I know that at the high school, the social sciences department is one of the most popular and that's always been a bit of a, a stress, a strain rather on the, on the teachers because there are so many different course offerings, because we want to cover a lot of material and there's such a huge breadth of history and social sciences to cover. But I always think it's really exciting what, what we have going on, six, six to twelve and of course K-12 as well in history and social science. I did have one question. Is there a way that we can embed, for example, the US two honors? It's really, it looks like we're really hands-on engaging in a lot of this stuff. Is there a way we can embed this work in all of our history classes, the civics component in all of our history classes? Obviously with the AP US exam, you probably want to do it after the exam. But because we don't have a universally taken civics class and we do want all of our students to be exposed to this kind of great curriculum, if we're, if we're able to embed it in different types of history classes in different ways, I think that would be excellent.
I know that I left a few things out just because I did, I tried to mainly focus on like newer things, but Ms. Mrs. Harvey always does a 21st century amendments activity with the students and I'm sure that's fascinating, especially at the high school level. I know in eighth grade, they're starting to have opinions and be able to think maybe separate from their parents and just balance everything that's out there, all the information. And so I can only imagine at the high school, it's even more enriching and just fascinating to hear what the kids are interested in and what they see as our issues and things to work on. But I can, the other teachers probably do it. It's just, and I think I left, I don't know, examining and creating claims about historical figures that belong on US currency and why that matters. I don't know if I included that, but I was fascinated by that because obviously the, I think it's, the twenty is changing, I forget which one, two in a little bit. And I, I find that stuff cool. But I collect the state quarters too, so maybe it's just me. Anyway, but I can, I can, you won't be here a year from now, but I will make sure that I will pass that along to the department and.
But those connections in the slide are with ancient government, European history. How she did the slide shows that it's more than current Americans.
Well, I'm geography. I mean, I know she's talking all the time about the world and our role, their role in it and, and it's, there's just so much, there's, while Littleton is, you know, it's a unique, it's a unique community, it's smaller than a lot of other communities, it's fairly homogeneous compared to a lot of other places. But I think that all the teachers, we realize that we need to try even harder to bring up certain issues and educate the students about other things out there. So when they do leave Littleton and go off to college, they hopefully can draw on some of the knowledge that we've tried to pass along. I have it, you know, on Islam, and that's in the framework, just the beginnings and the core beliefs of Islam. So I think in Mr. Jabai does stuff related to Hinduism, Buddhism. So I think what our content too, is in, in share, in teaching that to them is, is preparing them to realize how else other, how other people might live elsewhere in the world in the US too.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Everything that you're doing is really exciting stuff.
I agree. Not every day. I'm not sure how much they love the Enlightenment, but I'm trying. Anyway, anyone else?
And do you have both mints, from both mints or just the?
Do I have what?
The quarters, both mints.
Oh, no, no. No, I'm just trying to get at least one.
No, I, I, I really like the way, you know, you, you know, weaving the current events and, and, and other pieces into the, into the thing there to connect not only the past but what's happening now with, with the, into the classroom there. One is, is, is not to be an editorial, but I noticed that even at work during the coffee pot talk, depending on which news source somebody gets their information from, there's like two totally different perspectives on even like the political events there. At which point do you start mixing in, you know, the, the news sources and the different points of views that come from the media, you know, as students are forming opinions or doing their reference and fact checking?
I, I know that I personally probably, I don't, if I mention something, it might be offhand, so I'm, but I'm guessing that I would have to ask the high school teachers. But I'm sure that that's, that's a good point. And I, I don't have a good answer from my personal experience, but I'm guessing the high school teachers get a little more into it. But that is something that even in college, one of the papers I remember the most was writing about Marion Barry, the mayor of DC, because I grew up outside of DC. And when he got arrested, he got in trouble with drugs, like the DC papers or the southern papers versus northern papers, newspapers reporting on that because that's happened all throughout history. And I think that's something to remind.
Yeah. Well, I noticed even the, you know, within the US, the different political points of views reflected in the thing. And then you read international papers and their perspectives of what's going on in the US is, it's interesting. It's in terms of the different, the totally different meanings people draw out of actions there. But no, thank you very much for the presentation.
The only comment I have is to build on that. There is a very, a start towards teaching students how to consume media. Not necessarily in the classroom yet, it's more, you know, workshops and things done at the end of the day as enrichment. But the media landscape is evolving so rapidly and has changed so much from when we were consuming media, that if we can't teach them how to do it, then we limit their ability to be effective citizens. So I would hope to think that as you guys continue to, you know, assess how are we going to teach current events, history, that how to consume media is going to become part of the instruction base. How to discern what is being told truthfully, whether it's, whether you agree with it or not, how it's being told truthfully versus, you know, not being manipulated. So it's out there and I'm sure it'll become more and more prescient, you know, relevant as we, as we get going. It's obvious that the way history is being taught is evolving. It's exciting. It's clear that the advent of technology and the delivery of curriculum materials in the buildings is so much different than it used to be with just a thick history tone. And you guys have been able to take advantage of that. And it's not what you're learning, it's how you're learning what happened. So then you can go learn more about what happened because you know how to do it. You know, that's the key, knowing what happened in a particular war is irrelevant if you can, but more relevant if you can determine how to go learn about other wars. You know, learning about World War II picks your interest and then you go from there to Vietnam and from there to, you know, the Gulf Wars, I mean, then you're all set, you can, you can keep going. You know, you can build on that for the rest of your life. So I think you guys are doing a great job. I think it's exciting. I wish I could go back to high school, I really do, just for this stuff. Thank you.
Thank you.
From my experience, the high school teachers, we do a lot of stuff with primary sources just because it's not biased, or well, it is biased because someone wrote it, but it's less now biased versus living in the moment. And we go a little bit into like understanding of the landscape because we have to write freshman, sophomore and junior research papers. So like, I know that eventually there'll be some class in some year where it's designated to like, does this source really look reliable to you? But I think my grade is pretty well off with all, from all of the research papers to having a good sense of like reliable versus not.
Good point. All right.
Thanks. Good evening. Thank you for having me. Just want to say thanks to school committee, administrators, colleagues. If you take a look here, the state curriculum for ELA, we have a couple images here, an engaged classroom. One of my colleagues, Rich Tombino, with a visitor, a professional writer, I'll talk about that later. April, obviously it's winding down, but it is National Poetry Month, so I'll be talking about that briefly. And, you know, one of my better students will put the shades on there from the day. Just want to start off with a couple of highlights and accomplishments, even though, you know, we're representing humanities here. We've got some data, some numbers. Was looking at the recent 2016 MCAS scores. At the 10th grade level, the CPI score is quite high. And if you're not familiar with that, I jot this down. But CPI, I'm going to read definition there, is a measure of the extent to which students are progressing toward proficiency. A school score is calculated by combining points generated by students who take standard MCAS tests as well as students who take MCAS alternatives. So what that is, is sort of really looking at, you know, a much larger student body. It's sort of accounting for everyone and combining that. So that's, that's a nice number to look at. I think it speaks to differentiate instruction and inclusion. The next bullet point there is student growth percentile. And that's an important, you know, measurement as well. So the SGP measures student progress by comparing one student's progress to the progress of other students with similar test performance histories, history, meaning their academic peers. So it's not just, you know, a couple of, you know, superstars that are sort of skewing the data or anything like that. So looking at groups of students as they progress through the ranks. So that's a nice, that's a nice measurement tool. And the fact that increased seven percent might not seem, you know, like a huge percent, but when the students have been performing well at the ELA MCAS level for a while, that's actually a nice number. Shows some, some real growth, again, not just a couple of students, but you know, across the board. A few other highlights, this year several students won prizes or honorable mention in writing contests. We have a couple of creative writing classes. I'll be talking about that in a minute as well. And two LHS seniors will be reading their award winning, winning poetry tonight, actually, during a special event at Lunenburg Public Library. So I hope they're doing well tonight and enjoying that. Something else we did earlier this year was to begin college essay conferences. So we began a new tradition at LHS in October, a full week of individual college essay conferences during which seniors met with one English teacher to receive personalized feedback on their essays. So years ago, you know, speaking from my own example, but I would imagine it's probably similar to other teachers, you know, you might have most of the class doing one thing, you're trying to meet one-on-one with another student, maybe there's a movie going on, you tell everyone to be working on that. And so that, that's very hard to juggle and, you know, we're all, we're juggling every day. But we made a concerted effort as English department to sort of say, you know, the, the college essay is something, it's unique. It's probably at that point, the most important thing that students have written, to them anyways. It feels like, it's very real and it's not just about a grade. So we set aside time and we actually set aside a space. We had the bistro room. It's a nice, quiet space that, you know, feels a little bit more relaxed and civilized. And students were signed, they signed up to meet with a teacher on their own, kind of first come, first served. And of course, many students worked with teachers who they had currently, but they might be working with a student they had, a teacher they had last year. Or even, I read a few essays of, of students who I hadn't had in the classroom. So that was, that's great actually, that I think sort of like, hey, here, you know, here's, here's my work, sit down and talk about it. And it wasn't about, you know, wielding a red pen, I do that enough. So just sort of having a conversation. And regardless of where it is, some kids came in with very polished pieces, other kids came with some rough ones and we sort of gave them their advice, but it was a much better use of time. So I was appreciative of administration with actually providing us with subs. So there was one sub for a teacher. So really for that one day, I was kind of in that zone. I wasn't, all right, I'm doing this one thing with ninth graders, then I'm here. And again, it was sort of a little bit more focused and it was less hurried. And I think many of the students have already told me that, you know, they, they got accepted to their top school and stuff like that. And I'd like to think that that played a small role in that. So it's something we're very proud of. Couple of fun things, interesting things, exciting things. Writing workshop, I mentioned, that's my colleague, Rich Tombino, working with a professional writer, David Yu. David Yu's published several books, nonfiction and fiction, children's books as well. He actually is a professor at Pine Manor College. So during the workshop, we talked about writing obviously, but also college. So he had a different perspective. And he talked about writing as a career. I think we're aware that, you know, if we have a couple of creative writing classes, probably not 60 students are going to become professional writers. But again, we've talked a bunch about citizenship and I think that's a really important part, thinking about your role in society and your ability to write and think. And again, this was provided by an LEF grant, which we're, we were grateful to receive. A poem by a student who's reading tonight, like I said, at Lunenburg, a young man named Jared Dauphine, who does not identify as a poet, but he wrote a great poem and he, and he won a prize. So that was, that was exciting. This young man is interested in martial arts, eastern sort of philosophy stuff. But he wrote this poem and it's an interesting mix of, it seems like eastern philosophy and Edgar Allan Poe. So I'm just going to read a few short lines. I'll, I'll do my best. I'm sure Jared's going to do much better tonight when he reads it. "The tea is perfect. There is one secret I keep from her. We are open completely. We never lie to each other. Every morning she makes a pot of hot green tea. On the porch, she brings a mug out and places it down without looking at me. It's a morning ritual I have come to adore. She'll ask if I want another cup and I'll reply, please no more. Though I have never told her I hate her brew." And then it goes on. It's quite fun. It's very clever. And so again, like that's not a student who, you know, he told me at the beginning of class, he wanted to be a professional writer, but you know, sort of, you know, discovering something that maybe they didn't realize, a talent that they had, so that's fine. Professional development, I mentioned MCAS before, but we are continuing to update the curriculum to match the new MCAS 2.0, so to speak. It's, it's sort of just updating some of the best practices we've been doing. They have, the MCAS is sort of stylized and formulated in a certain way, but there have been some changes and especially in reading and writing. So we've discussed on the best way to prepare students for that assessment. At the middle school, teachers created a common graphic organizer for all grades, which supports transitions between sixth, seventh and eighth grade. And then also we focused on sharing strategies for struggling students and working on best practices, again, for differentiated instruction to help students grow because, you know, all students take English and we don't have that many levels. So we have students from many different ability levels working together. And so that's something we continue to pride ourselves in and work on. And then finally, sorry, I got cut off, but that's sheltered English immersion at the top. And that is, that's one of the professional development modules that we, we created as the English department, we worked on. And we worked along with members from the history department. So we adapted nonfiction texts using sheltered immersion English and those strategies and created lessons that include ELL strategies. And those are just some of the strategies. RAF stands for, you know, role, audience, focus, topic, that sort of thing, and partner reading, tiered instruction. So just slightly different strategies, not something that we've never heard of, but again, sort of maybe a new way of sort of addressing things we've been doing forever, teaching, reading and writing. Another thing we're proud of, so we, we had this new requirement that we knew about for a while, but teachers had to get certified in, in SEI. And there's a couple of different ways to go about that and we had some time. But I'm very proud that our department, we decided to sort of support and coach each other. And even though we didn't know exactly what we were getting into with the test, because this was sort of the first time this test was conducted, we, we had everyone take the test, we staggered it, but everyone now has passed and everyone's SEI endorsed. And that was really a team effort. We sort of coached each other and worked on that. So we're, we're proud to have that sort of taken care of.
No, thank you for the presentation. I actually don't have any questions. I was very, very thorough on it tonight.
Thanks for delving into the sheltered English immersion. I know it's something we do, but I don't, we don't, just don't often hear about it. And so that was really valuable information for me to have today. I learned something, so.
Great.
That must mean you're a great teacher.
Thank you.
Teach me something new. I also really liked how you, you focus on the growth and the individual attention on the college essays. It is hard. It is hard when you have a class and it's writing where you can really, as you said, give attention to each, each student. It can be difficult to find that time and to get in a headspace, headspace with each student when you're trying to hit, you know, 23, 25 kids or more in a class, it's tough. And so I really think it was an interesting model that the department adopted for the college essays. And I think that's, that type of attention, even though it's much longer per student or per piece of work, I think not only will that help their college essays, but I think it will help them realize their strengths and weaknesses as writers. And so I think that's really, really impressive that we're able to do that and provide that individual attention. I'm grateful.
Yeah, I appreciate the presentation.
It's clear that you guys are moving forward and not resting on your laurels and always with an eye towards what can we do better? I appreciate the example you gave with Jared Dauphine. I know Jared very well, he played basketball for me pretty much his whole life. It's good to see that he's more subtle with the written word than he is with a basketball, because I've seen him almost knock down some walls with it. But the point being that, you're right, he is a kid who you, you know, as you grew up with him or watched him grow up, you wouldn't necessarily think that literature was going to pique his interest. But it's clear that you guys managed to, you know, introduce enough material that you did indeed pique his interest. And whatever it ends up doing, it is almost irrelevant at this point. The fact is, it's another thing for him to evaluate and think about and move forward with if he chooses to. So I think that's a terrific, it's anecdotal, but a terrific, you know, example of what can be done, of what you guys are clearly achieving. So terrific. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Was the, like, the week of, like, college essay help was like, they were a little stressed about it because, like, it went up, so suddenly they're like, wait, where do I sign up? Are all the teachers taken? But from all of my friends that have done it or went through it, they found it really helpful, and I look forward to it next year. Because as much as I love my parents, I don't need them here editing all of my papers.
Yeah. It doesn't work, and don't bother.
You're a wise beyond your two years for us offer.
I like to believe that I listen to the feedback and like, take it, but I don't see it happening so much.
Thank you for having me. Oh, we're going to start right off with the graphics department. This year, they actually received quite a few technological advances. So in the graphics department, they received a Epson wide format printer, which has allowed them to now be able to print anything 24 inches wide and of pretty much infinite length, because it's on a roller, so they can print as long as you'd like. So it can also print on different media, such as photo paper, canvases. So that's really expanded what the animation, digital media classes have been able to do. They also were, through Natalie Branch, were able to receive the Adobe suite on all the computers in the MacLab. So that's really opened up some opportunities for the students in those classes as well. And they were also the recipient of an LEF grant, which allowed them to get some digital drawing tablets to go along with the graphics classes. I believe there were 21 of those, so that was a very useful acquisition that they received this year. At the, we also had several students who won some awards in the Scholastic Art Competition. Carly Faber won two gold keys in drawing and illustration and the painting categories. She also won a silver key in drawing and illustration and received honorable mentions in comic art and for her art portfolio. She also won the National AP Student Art Competition, which was titled Owning Your Future. So out of 800 entries, her work, The Rise, was one of 18 that was selected to be exhibited at the College Board New York office. Brendan Jones also won a gold and silver key for his photography. Emma Manning got an honorable mention for her mixed media work. And Savannah Armento had two honorable mentions in photography. Carly and Brendan's work is displayed at the Scholastic Art Exhibition in Boston currently. So there's also artwork on display at the Ruben Hore Library by Littleton High School students and that, oh, sorry, that actually ended last week. And the High School Art Show will be occurring on May 9th in association with the Spring Concert. And the ceramics classes also worked this year to create some beautiful flower vases for the Council on Aging Luncheon. At the middle school, Nicole Winters, our middle school art teacher, is piloting a school-wide program to create a maker space. She's hoping that this will empower some students to collaboratively create and innovate. It also will allow the teachers to collaborate, collaborate and innovate as well. Looking forward to helping cultivate some more critical thinking. She also received a grant to get a printmaking press. So that's allowing students to create works of art using monoprints, holographs, and woodblock prints. She has also spent this year primarily focusing on creating art that goes beyond just learning about methods and materials, but focusing more on content and big ideas. And she gave a good example, she did a sixth grade drawing and painting project where students had to create artwork that metaphorically represented their inner selves. And then they had to learn how to draw that. So it was kind of an inner and outer art experience. She also has a lot of great social media, so you should definitely follow her if you don't already. And she's at LMSArts.Widley.com. And then she also has an Instagram as well. So at the elementary level, students at Shaker Lane and Russell Street have been learning through, using a variety of media, including painting, drawing, sculpture, clay, and collage. In addition to color theory, which has been a focus at the elementary level for a couple of years now, they have begun working more in depth to expand their understandings of line variation. This took specifically place at the first, third, and fifth grade levels. Shaker Lane and Russell Street Schools also showcased art during month-long exhibits at the Ruben Hore Library. The fourth grade has taken a field trip for several years now and is going again to the Decore de la Sculpture Park in Lincoln. And the fifth grade field trip to Boston to the Institute of Contemporary Art. And they'll participate in a gallery tour and a studio experience there. Russell Street had their art show at the school on March 23rd. Nearly 800 pieces of art were on display. And the fifth grade student docent program and green screen master photos were also on display there. Shaker Lane's art show is scheduled for June 7th. And Andrea Romano continues to use social media as well. So she could also, would love if you followed her as well on Twitter. The chorus program has continued to grow and improve. Some highlights this year include the LHS and the eighth grade chorus performing at a Providence Bruins game. There was successful concerts in December for all the groups, as well as a performance at the Veterans Day Ceremony at the middle school and the Council on Aging Luncheon. The high school chorus is traveling to the Great East Festival in May. It's been a couple of years since we've had any of our musical performing groups in festivals, so that's exciting for them. We've had one student this year, Martina Smith. She qualified and performed in the Juniors' Festival in January. And in the fall, the high school play Midsummer Jersey gave three entertaining performances. And the middle school musical, Reigning Cats and Dogs, featured more than 50 students in three different performances. The high school musical, By Liberty, featured 40 students, and that was fairly recently in early April. And on May 12, 13, and 14, the spring middle school play Charlotte's Web will be on display, and it is featuring the largest cast for a middle school production in over 12 years. So, moving on to the band program. The middle school band is the proud recipient of a three-quarter sized tuba, thanks to an LEF grant. As the program starts to expand and numbers begin to grow at the younger level, having broader instrumentation is great to help develop the younger students' musicianship. So that was really a neat acquisition, and you wouldn't be surprised at how many students are just fascinated by a tuba. The middle school has had two of their three annual performances, our winter concert and the now fourth annual townwide concert, which featured all 267 of my students performing at the same time at the end. And their final performance at the middle school is on Tuesday, June 6th. The high school band earned $700 at our Sweets and Sweets fundraiser in November, which is also now a traditional event. This was, I believe, also the fourth year that we have done that. That was shortly after our great football season. We played both at the Town Tree Lighting and the Holiday Bazaar, as well as the winter concert, as we typically do. Our fourth mattress sale has yielded the biggest profits yet, with $4,100 going right to the LPS Band Program. So that was very successful. We recently performed, the Jazz Band recently performed at the Council on Aging Luncheon, and we are very much looking forward to our spring concert on May 9th. An association with the Spring Concert is also the High School Art Show as well. Also performing at the May 9th concert is the Beginning Guitar Class, and it's very exciting. This year, we've had the biggest enrollment we've ever had with 16 members, and having only 15 guitars was a small hurdle that we overcame, but we were able to get two more. So that was another great acquisition. The Band Booster parents have been very, very helpful. So you can follow all of the happenings of the instrumental department by following me on Twitter, @MrsBridgeLPS, if you're interested. And, let's see. And the elementary music, with focusing on the new national standards for music, Mr. Gansenberg at the foundation level, kindergarten and first grade focuses primarily on beat, tonality, simple meter, and form. And there is an incredible amount of things that you can do with those concepts. And second graders get to expand a little further, and they have some more exposure to musical notation to start to build some musical literacy. The third grade began to learn more complex concepts, like ostinato and theme and variation. The fourth grade expands by beginning to look at musical knowledge through the lens of an instrumentalist with the introduction of the recorder program. Fourth grade also has a lot of folk songs that tie in very closely to the social studies curriculum at the fourth grade level. A lot of Americana folk music there. And then the fifth graders have been discussing music as philosophers and social scientists. They've begun to discuss what music is, what music isn't, what makes music good, why we make music, and also learning about how some other cultures treat music currently or historically, which may be, or may not be, the same as we do. At all levels, students sing, improvise, compose, and play instruments. Mr. Gansenberg uses standard solfège and music learning theory with his teaching. And younger students get to compose using body percussion, which is kind of neat. And the older students compose with the more traditional guidelines of tonality and form. So, thank you.
Question with Alex. I want to say something constructive, but I just love everything that your department is doing, K-12. And I really think it's exciting what the community is supporting, the growing band. I mean, knowing the band has been growing for years, and there's always going to be a need for music and instruments. And I'm just really excited about the support of the community and the work that you are doing to foster so many kids who are learning to sing and to play instruments.
Thank you.
I wish I had something constructive.
I'll take compliments, too, that's fine.
Yeah, no, I think the success of the music program and the arts in general, the participation rates are just going through the, keep going up. Which I think is a testament to how much the students are enjoying the programs, as well as what we as a community get from it. Yeah, so thank you.
Thank you.
I like those comments. I think it's impressive that, you know, the breadth of offering and the capacity that the students have shown, and, you know, we see that in athletics as well. We're a small district, and to be able to have this level of achievement with this many students in this many areas is ridiculously impressive. I also would like to thank the, the art teachers, because teaching the arts in public schools is much different than teaching in the classroom. You have to get them out of the classroom to really show what they're capable of doing, and that takes a lot of work and effort beyond the normal school day, and you guys do a great job of it. And the kids are, and the community is obviously taking advantage of it and enjoys it. So thank you very much for that effort. It's clearly paying off.
Thank you.
Thanks, Laura.
So I'm, I'm going to adjust this.
You're going to try.
There we go. So thank you for having me. I'm pleased to be able to tell you about the state of the science, technology, and engineering curriculum for 2017. We pride ourselves on our engaging, challenging, and relevant science, technology, and engineering curriculum. And we really do believe that our students truly enjoy science. That's one of our major goals. It's not just that they learn and understand science, but they truly enjoy it, as many of them pursue science post-secondary, they're entering STEM fields. So at the middle school, we've been continuing to update, upgrade, and align our curriculum to the new standards. So we thought we were all set last year, but then they republished another update last April of 2016. So we're still looking at our curriculum and making sure that we're aligned. And we're also looking to see that we're smoothly transitioning the concepts from sixth through eighth, and then again up into the high school. So as I mentioned last year about this time, that the new standards involve the integration of science and engineering processes, rather than just having science experience, students experience science. The standards are written so that they're actively engaged. For example, rather than saying that students will understand that all living things are made of cells, which is the way the old standards were written, the new standards say that they will construct a model to show that all living things are made of cells. So it's a much more active wording, and it requires a, kind of a ripping apart of, of our teaching and really looking at each lesson and lab to see how does it align with the new way of approaching. It's not really a new way, but it's, it does require that we really rethink and examine everything. So it's a lot of work. So we added several new curricular units to the middle school in reaction to the new standards, including physics of waves, which is in sixth grade, and electromagnetism, which is in seventh grade, and weather and climate, which is now in eighth grade. Those have never been taught at the middle school level before, so we did get some new materials this year. The redesign of our old units is focusing on incorporating authentic experiments and exploration to help to connect concepts to everyday life, and also to include the engineering projects to apply scientific information to creating solutions and products. Also at LMS, as Hillary mentioned, we have a small committee working on the creation of a maker space. So that includes Nicole Winters, Todd Shoemaker, and myself. We've set up the room. We have another room in mind for next year, and we're working on integrating it into the school milieu. So we actually have just recently, like yesterday, applied to be part of an exciting startup program through MIT. It starts in May, so we should find out soon. So this would involve training the trainers, pretty much, so that we'd have at least four staff members that would be going to MIT and being involved in workshops that would help us to develop curriculum to integrate maker space into our school community. So hopefully, we'll find out about that soon. At the high school, one major focus that they've had this year is how to, how to meet the needs of struggling students who have difficulty with executive function skills like organization of time and materials, and for those who struggle with anxiety also. So they've been integrating these coping skills into the CP level courses and really trying to think about how to meet the needs of those students. They're also focusing, like we are, on incorporating more hands-on and authentic experiences for students. And so one way they've been approaching that is through the flipped classroom model, which allows teachers to include more in-class time for exploring and applying concepts through experiments and activities, rather than the traditional lecture. So it's, it is also acknowledging the new standards and looking at having the kids actively engaged in learning science, rather than passively taking in information. In physics, courses have been further expanded, so there's now three AP physics course offerings, as well as a new Physics II course. And this is in addition to basic physics, CP, and honors that we've had. So that's a lot of physics for a small school. It's pretty interesting and awesome. And in chemistry, they've upgraded their curriculum to incorporate instruction on the nature of science, which is how science is done, how people learn science, how science has been discovered in the past, and it's really how scientific progress is made. And so the goal is to increase students' interest in science and in engineering careers, or to, to continue to increase their interest. So for professional development, we've been involved in many PD opportunities. We've done a lot of work this year at the district level. I noticed that there are more district-level initiatives that people have been working on than outside conferences and workshops. And I think that's in reaction to the new standards that were published. And like I said, it is a lot of work to really examine everything that you do and add new units and things. So we've been, again, working on updating and aligning our curriculum, to update our STEM courses, to align with the new standards, and to improve student learning and engagement through more hands-on experiences, and to offer students more variety, even in our small school district. And like I said, the maker space at the middle school is ready. We're beginning to integrate it into the sixth, eighth coursework in the fall, regardless of whether we're chosen for the MIT program. That is our plan. Science faculty also attended a number of conferences and workshops, including the MAST Conference, that's the Massachusetts Association of Science Teachers Conference. We went to workshops on maker spaces, workshops on STEM curriculum, and workshops on executive function. And finally, we've worked in collaboration with other professionals. And finally, we've worked in collaboration with other professionals. I serve on the Mass Board of Directors for Middlesex County. They're collaborating with the Middlesex Community College to offer dual enrollment for physics and also working with colleagues outside of the science department, like in the art department. So our current focus areas and initiatives as we look to next year, at the middle school, we plan to continue to evaluate our new curriculum and make sure that it develops concepts smoothly and clearly from sixth to eighth. And also we're going to keep reflecting, it's always an iterative process where we have to try something, reflect on it, tweak it and try it again so that we keep updating and improving it to make sure everything works well. We want, we need to update practices and old lessons and activities. And we also are aiming to keep incorporating more engineering practices and the use of technology into our classes. We want to make sure that we're maximizing student learning and engagement. We are preparing for the updated science and technology and engineering MCAS, which is tentatively going to be in 2019. That will incorporate all of the new standards. That was the tentative date that I heard the last time that I heard from the DESE. And for the maker space, the goal is to fully integrate the use of the maker space first into science, technology and art, and then to use these classes to encourage and support integration with the other courses. So the three of us will serve as mentors and examples for how to use a maker space as part of the curriculum. And then at LHS, again, they're, one of their goals is to offer dual enrollment with Middlesex for physics courses. And they also are establishing an innovation center in the LHS media center to allow more students than just physics students and engineering students access to tools and technology such as the 3D printers. So finally, I just wanted to say that according to the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, by 2022, there will be nine million jobs in STEM fields and this is an increase of one million jobs, more than one million from 2012 to 2022. So I just wanted to thank the district for all the support they've given us to ensure that our Littleton students are ready for the future in STEM. So, thank you.
No, thank you very much for the presentation. I personally have been very satisfied with the science program as my own children have gone through it themselves there. One question on, in the class course offerings there, AP chemistry, has that been an interest or has that been just an area that we have been able to support?
So we've discussed it and I think John would probably have more to say about that, but I know that it's a very expensive endeavor. It involves updating and upgrading lab equipment and safety equipment, chemicals. And I think it's really the infrastructure of the lab that needs to be improved. I know that there's definitely an interest in adding more chemistry.
And then the one thing, I think I mentioned it before on the dual enrollment, I think that's a great opportunity for students to get some exposure, you know, with the college programs there. But I also caution that we need to make sure that depending on where the students are going to go into college, that it's the right set of things. Because what we've noticed, even with the AP physics and stuff, if you're going into some of the hard sciences or engineering, it helps, but they still make you take the advanced introductory physics. So it's making sure that the students are properly prepared versus, you know, some of the other ones where it might not be one of their core requirement courses there as we guide the students down that, those paths there.
We have talked about doing kind of a survey from alumni to see how they, what they're majoring in and how they found that they're prepared for, especially for the STEM fields because I'm, you know, the science curriculum coordinator, but I think so that's a special interest of ours. And again, I do think that there are so many jobs that are available in many areas of STEM that it's really important to keep looking past 12th grade to think about how we're preparing our students.
Alex.
I've really enjoyed watching the science department evolve from the science department to science, technology and engineering over the last several years and to see not just the curriculum expand to cover more of what we think we need to be teaching students in the 21st century, but also to see the way we've been engaging with students change. There's more project-based learning, there's more of an engagement with students, the way that students grow differently and learn differently, and I think that's really fantastic. And it's, I think that's probably harder to do in the sciences in particular for some reason. At least that was my experience as a student going through the system and I think it's really exciting that the department is sort of tacking that head on.
One of the things that I've learned to do in the last couple of years is to tell the kids to use their phones during the lab. And I have a lab that I've done to show potential and kinetic energy and you have to drop a ball and see how high it bounces. And so using the slow-mo feature on their camera, I mean on their phone, made this lab so much more interesting and precise for the kids. They could see how to use a tool that they carry in their pocket. It's not just for texting, it can be used for science. And I have a, I have a thermal imaging camera that I got with a grant from LEF last year that attaches to my iPhone and that's one of the pictures, actually at the end of the slideshow. This is a boy in the classroom, so that's his heat. So they love this and I might write another grant to get five more, six more so that we have them to use at each lab station because it's really, it really makes the science visual and understandable because we can feel heat, but we can't see it until we use a tool like that. So, and again, it goes on an iPhone, so.
And I also just wanted to point out what Dr. Harrington was saying earlier tonight when he was recognizing Mrs. Harrington at the, at the high school is that science is not just science for science's sake, but you can use science to teach children and students about everything else in the world and civics and how to engage with their community and things like that. And I think that's really cool. I think it's probably why we see the community able to give back to the science department in such a powerful way.
Yes, Beth Morgan talked about civic engagement and I do believe that being a scientifically literate person is really important for civic engagement. We vote for people who make decisions about our health and our environment and it's really important to be scientifically literate also, so.
Thank you. I appreciate the, getting these kinds of updates. The, to Alex's point, the evolution of the offerings at the high school and the evolution of the curriculum development at the middle school, which you spearheaded over a couple of years now. Clearly, again, you know, we continue to think about how can we do better? We're already doing well, but how can we do better? And the fact that the staff is so willing to embrace new ideas, new classes, I mean it's, it would be easy just to say, no, we're doing fine, let's just keep doing what we do well. And then, but to think about them innovating like that and willing to make that commitment to the students is very, you know, we really appreciate that. It's amazing.
Makes it more exciting.
Thank you.
Jerry Lind is going to, in a minute, talk about elementary curriculum, but I wanted to say a few words now that we're, we've heard from our middle school, high school curriculum coordinators. Each subject discipline brings a unique perspective to the learning environment. When I listen to the curriculum coordinators speak over the last two school committee meetings, it's very evident to me that there's an interdisciplinary dependence that's increasing. And that's a good positive thing because learning is more than just a subject discipline. It's a compilation of many subjects together and making sense of the world that we live in. All of you bring such a strong leadership base to your departments and you're striving to become the best. You're, you're looking for partnerships. You understand and portray and actualize the learning environment beyond the classroom. And that takes a lot of time and effort on your part. And it's certainly greatly appreciated. It makes a world of difference to our students and the hours that you put in in each subject discipline, and it's different because each discipline has different things that you have to do to make it exciting and make the curriculum rigorous. But the time that you spend is so appreciated and our students greatly benefit and our community sees this. They see what you do. And I look at the science curriculum, it's phenomenal what we're doing. I look at the arts, the fine arts. The way those programs have built throughout time is fascinating. We truly educate the whole child. And what's so exciting to me as a superintendent is to see our students delve into the various subject disciplines with passion. They're not just, oh, I like science and I hate everything else. So they want to experience all these different things. And I really think that's unique to our school district. And school districts strive to offer what we do and we're able to do this because of the dedication of our staffs and our curriculum coordinators that we have before us this evening and our leadership team. So thank you so much for everything that you do.
Mike, do you? I want to really maybe address this to Kelly, but while everybody was talking, a few topics came up that I think I want to maybe ask as a district question, not necessarily directly back to the coordinators there. The comments on the antisemitism. Yeah.
So tongue tied.
Yes, there. And in general, the rise of hate speech and other extremism within the U.S. and stuff there, how much of a local problem are we seeing with that? And then, you know, not just the local things that we're doing within a class or two, but what are we thinking about district-wide about those types of issues there?
I'm glad you asked that question, Darrell. I mean, there isn't a day that goes by that it isn't on our minds and we're keeping a pulse on the situation because you just never know. This community though, and our students are generally very, and I don't like using the word accepting, they go way beyond accepting of diversity, they celebrate diversity. But that doesn't mean that we're insulated from outside influences and, you know, we have these conversations around the table with our leadership team. We're looking for the indicators within our schools that tell us that we're doing what we need to do to make sure that our students and staff feel safe and nurtured and that's so important to us as a district. To, at this point in time, and it's always one of those things, Darrell, you'll see when, when you're asking a superintendent about how things are going, they always try to find some wood to knock on because there's a belief out there that sometimes when you talk about these things, something happens that you never expected will happen. So with that caution, I'm just going to say to you, we, we feel at this point in time that our students are understanding of what's happening and then within a broader perspective, we're not seeing any uptick of behaviors or actions that would bring concern to the table at this point in time. But that doesn't mean that we're not thinking of ways to ensure that we maintain the environment and the climate and culture that we have.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we understand what the situation is and how we're monitoring it and what types of things we'd be doing in it. I don't want to say in anticipation of that, but to make sure people understand where we really should be acting and kind of values that we have going forward there. The other one, again, it's mainly a question at the district level, the SEI piece there, you know, the sort of the, it speaks to the increasing diversity of Littleton there. What types of percentages, numbers of students do we see needing, need that kind of support at this point? Has it been increasing?
It has and that was one of the reasons why we're adding another ESL teacher next year. A few years ago, we were running around fourteen or fifteen students within our district and we're up to close to thirty, between thirty and thirty-one students.
It's almost doubled just in a couple of years.
Exactly. And what's fascinating to me is, you know, they, these students come in with various degrees of proficiency and having had this conversation with many districts across the Commonwealth in terms of, you know, how are we, how are we keeping up to this need? A lot of districts are struggling because of the staffing that they don't have to try to help students. And I think the SEI endorsement has been very beneficial to the Massachusetts in general. But in our case, within our district, having Jerry Lind work together with the Department of Education to bring instructor and instructor to our district for both fall and winter courses has made a tremendous difference. And you heard one of our curriculum coordinators speak this evening about the fact that, you know, it's really, really quite beneficial to be in a class together where you can bounce ideas off each other and then when you're back in your school and you're in your classrooms, you can use each other to bounce ideas off in terms of putting practice, or putting theory into practice. So I think as a district, I don't think I know, it was a great thing that we could do. And it also made it more convenient for staff to not have to travel anywhere, just had to stay here and, you know, be able to access that course without having to drive twenty or thirty miles to do so. You know, we are evolving. ESL and students that come in with other languages, it's a challenge for them too. And what a district needs to do is really identify where those students are and individualize those programs so that it truly makes a difference. I mean, and it can be a daunting task or a daunting experience for these students. I mean, just think if any one of us were shipped or airplane to another country that spoke a language that we have never really heard before and they just dropped us there. I mean, that's kind of the experience that some of our students have when they're, you know, coming to our town. Not that many, but we've had, we've had some that really had very little understanding of English and they are prospering in our schools. I can think of four or five off the top of my head that I've really seen a tremendous difference. But again, it's the culture and the caring environment and it goes beyond the school. It includes our community as well. So we're headed in the right direction. Could we always use more resources? Of course. But I haven't figured out how to grow a money tree yet, so we do what we can and we maximize every dollar that we can to ensure that we're meeting the needs of every child that's in our district.
You know, earlier in the year, when we made the presentation on professional development, you had asked about having the opportunity to see some of the projects or hear from some teachers. And the slide from the English department that Mr. Pex, which you presented about the sheltered ambulance instruction, it does, that's actually going to be one of the projects we're going to showcase. And it really reflects what Mr. Fonzenella said about not resting on the laurels. I mean, this is an English department and they're doing interdisciplinary work, as a superintendent said, and they're coming together and taking a look at very, very interesting nonfiction essays and working in a interdisciplinary way to adjust that instruction and to incorporate the sheltered English immersion strategies. You know, meeting the needs of those students is not just with the ESL teacher, it's with the core academic teachers. And this is an exemplary, you know, when you have seven or eight on ten students scoring advanced on MCAS, this is a group that doesn't rest on their laurels. And they're looking at, you know, the best American essays and different textbooks and shaping them and reshaping them for students who have different levels of proficiency in the English language. And I just think that is tremendously exciting. They're not just a group of people that, you know, suffered through the course and then didn't apply it.
No, I just wanted to thank the presenters tonight to, you know, that highlighted some topics of local, you know, of national concern and local concern and that, you know, we are actively dealing with them and integrating it right within the classrooms. But I think a lot of people can lose sight of even a small district like ours experience all of the same things just to a different degree. So, thank you.
I wanted to comment on that because your two questions, Darrell, are very related to the curriculum, but also related to the student health survey that we're going to talk about later. And ESL is, I think, probably one of the most challenging and most wonderful things that a school district can do. I mean, those students struggle through so much and that's such a high bar to meet. And the fact that we're engaging in that and not just, as you said, Dr. Damian, with the ESL instructors or the, but also the entire staff in the school community is wonderful. And I think it ties into the same concerns about the hate speech in the world, those antisemitism, antisemitism or anti-Muslim rhetoric, anti-gay rhetoric, whatever it might be. I think as Kelly said, if our students are not just accepting, but welcoming and celebrating of diversity, we're going to grow as a district and grow as a community in having students who are participating- And having students who are participating, more students who are participating in ESL services, who need ESL support, I think strengthens that ability of our district to be inclusive. And then, as we saw in the curriculum, because it is interdisciplinary, as we've gone through the reports earlier tonight, most evidently, I think, in the history and social sciences curriculum, but throughout, we're talking about not just, you know, traditional American history, where you start, talk about the Revolutionary War and talk about, you know, locally the Revolutionary War, where we're talking about how that affects different types of people and different groups of people. And the more we can do that, the more we can talk about antisemitism throughout history or LGBT history, what it's like to live in this country and be a person of color. I think that's really important stuff. And so I think there were two separate questions, but I just wanted to say that I am so proud of what this district is doing on that type of work, and it's never been more important than it is now. And I think we were doing it before, we've seen this flare up in the US, but I think it's so important that we continue to lead on that issue. So I just wanted to say thanks to the curriculum coordinators and to you, Dr. Jamie, for that.
I'd like, sorry.
Microphone's going to real workout.
Different heights.
Yep, just leave it.
I'd like to turn our attention now to the elementary level, grade K to five. We feel we've had a productive year. This is the second full year of the implementation of the Journeys ELA program. And you've heard about that adoption and implementation for the last two years. And we are actively, we're taking a look at how that program is being implemented and focusing on certain aspects of that program, as you do when you refine your practice and you compare it across and between grade levels. We're also involved in planning of a new programmatic adoption, a new FOS science program. And I first came and made a presentation about a science programmatic adoption in 2011. So I want to say that, you know, we are, we continue to appreciate the support of the school committee and the community in order to make, to adopt these foundational resources. As I talk tonight about program adoptions in general, I just want to have people bear in mind just a couple of thoughts about our approach to these programmatic adoptions. We adopt them because they are research-based, they provide a continuity and equity across classrooms, you know, in the same grade level, and they provide a vertical alignment with a standard-based curriculum. And while these programmatic adoptions are an essential foundational aspect, we talked about this with the grade-level teams and with principals often, and the superintendent echoes this, it, those programs are not the complete picture. Teachers develop and extend the courses, they mesh together their interests, their strengths, their students' needs to adjust and diversify and differentiate instruction and integrate technology. So there's, these programs are a piece of the pie, but they're not, they're the foundation, but they're not the complete picture. What also is, paints a context of any consideration of a program adoption, and we were taking a look this year at central elements of current practice in writing, is the context of the framework learning standards. The 2011 ELA standards set forth new standards for writing, and those frameworks were revised again this year. And I want to emphasize that all of our teachers, our teachers across all grade levels, K to five, have made a major shift in involving students with the types, three types of writing in alignment with the learning standards. It's no longer a personal narrative exclusively, like, tell me about this, or I enjoy going to visit. It's an emphasis on narrative, an emphasis on informative and expository writing, and an emphasis on opinion and persuasion. And it's presented in a developmentally appropriate way. And what, you know, it may be expository writing or informative writing for a kindergarten student is very different from the fifth grade and is different from what you saw 11th to 12th grade, 10th and 11th, 12th grade students are about. Writing takes place during the ELA block. Sometimes that ELA block is scheduled at different times in the day, or it may, and the ELA block or the reading block itself can contain an activity devoted to writing. And in the ELA block, most often, the type of writing that students are engaged in is a writing that focuses on reading comprehension, that involves students responding to text, which is a benchmark, which is an indication of how well they comprehend the types of rigorous reading and rigorous pieces of stories and authentic text that's in the Journeys program. And that was one of the reasons why we shifted to the Journeys program. So we want to have students actively engaged in responding to text. Writing in response to reading comprehension is a little different than explicit instruction in writing or having students actually pen compositions or works. The time that is devoted explicitly to the writing practice does vary. And it starts out maybe one time a week in kindergarten, and that writing is, emphasizes the labeling of letters and the labeling of words, and then talking about what those words mean, to approximately 30 minutes each day in grade five. Superintendent emphasized interdisciplinary approaches, cross-curricular connections, and we can state without exception that students write daily in other subjects. It may not be at the primary grade level, it may not be the same subject each day, but they write daily in other subjects. Math involves a lot of words and writing. Math, there is a real emphasis on open response question. In science and social studies, the type of writing skews to a focus on information and opinion writing. And here you get a little bit into what it means to have, you know, scientific literacy, being able to talk about a connection between yourself and something you're reading in science. And I'll go, I'll go into that a little bit later in detail. So those are important elements of writing practices as we're getting into a routine and learning more about the Journeys program. How the Journeys program is utilized does vary, and we're fine with that variation. As I mentioned before, Journeys response, the program resources are used mostly to have students respond to the text. That's part of the Journeys program. And at all grade levels, teachers modify the scope and sequence of the writing lessons and the administration and I are supportive of that. They could, they could find a more timely, a more local writing prompt or subject for the students to write, but it may be within the same genre, it may be the same type of writing, and it makes it more meaningful. All grade levels, in terms of assessments, they are in the process of developing or refining common rubrics for a type of consistency across grade levels. And a next step, as we take a look at a vertical progression of skills, would be to review the writing prompts from one grade to another. And then also for more professional development or support for teachers, investigate the possibility of other writing programs that are standalone programs to supplement the Journeys writing. That is something that when the, at elementary curriculum conference and the principals and I were talking with teachers, we said this would, this would be a logical next step in refining the English language arts. So before we have any questions on ELA, I'd like to switch to the next slide, which is science. Again, I want to emphasize the programmatic adoption in the context of standards-based curriculum and changes in the national and state standards. The Massachusetts Science Standards in 2006, came out in 2016, and that's revision. The last set of standards in science was 2006. It's just a little bit of history, and our FOS adoption was 2011. The new frameworks, and you heard a little echoes of this in Mrs. Finnerty's presentation, the new frameworks in science are based on the Next Generation National, Next Generation Science standard. Massachusetts standards reflect those, but they don't mirror it exactly. The major shift for our students in Massachusetts from 2006 to 2016 is that in 2006, the standards were listed in grade spans, K to two and three to five and six to eight. What Massachusetts shifted to in rewriting, many of the same content. The content hasn't shifted, but the standards themselves are grade-by-grade standards, they're grade-level specific. So things that were shifted at one grade level are now going to be shifted in another. And then the final shift, and we've talked about authentic scientific engagement, having students learn by being scientists and doing what scientists do, is the intentionality, explicit intentionality, explicit integration of science and engineering practices. And I, that's the reason I specifically listed what those scientific and engineering practices are. And the framework standards are, they're all action verbs. Okay? And so the challenge for our teachers is to have students ask questions about science, develop, you know, a thesis, develop a hunch, and have students go through these steps in a developmentally appropriate way. What does that look like for a first grader to be investigating these things, you know, balance and motion and different aspects of life science, earth science, and physical science? The next, so now going, our, we gathered a committee together, it was one person at each grade level. They spent two early release sessions and worked with myself, a FOS science consultant, and Mrs. Finnerty, so they have some continuity with six to 12. The next slide gives you an idea of some of the things that we looked at, we reviewed the standards, we reviewed how the FOS new kits would be presented for our students and which ones we should purchase and which ones we should not, and at what grade levels. And the last two topics show the major considerations that are new since we first adopted FOS, and what are the continuing parameters from the time that we adopted in 2011. When we first adopted the FOS, Full Option Science System, we wanted to purchase, and we remain appreciative to the community and the school committee, to allowing us to purchase sufficient material so that each student could experience authentic scientific inquiry. That was a first. And we're continuing that in three domains, life science, physical science, and earth science. And we're buying those updated kits in each, each of the three domains. And then, as I said, the other consideration is continuing to emphasize the integration of engineering practices and scientific investigation practices into instruction. The last slide is our FOS science scope and sequence. And every year when we have, I do an elementary curriculum update, one of us has updated the school committee on science. You've seen a chart. But what I want to emphasize is we're purchasing a number of new units, and we're also purchasing upgrades. So that, that, you know, some of the standards have changed a little, and then the green, the units that are listed in green are units that have moved from one grade level to another. So our teachers, elementary teachers certainly are not resting on their laurels, and they have a high challenge in front of them. Because as you look at the scope and sequence, the teachers at each grade level will be presented about two new units. They're not going to be teaching the same thing that they have in the past, and we'll be planning implementation workshops and workshops, you know, throughout the year. But it's very, I mean, the group, we had two visitors and two different representatives from FOS work with our teachers during the early release sessions, and they came away with being very impressed with how knowledgeable our teachers are. Okay, I don't want to take up my time. Assistant, no.
All right, Alex, comments?
No, thank you. This was very helpful and exciting watching the curriculum changes over the years. I know it's probably not been as thrilling to be, to have so many changes happening all at once, but I think it's a district we've done very well by them, so we appreciate it.
Yeah, I had to jot some notes as I was going through.
So thank you, first of all, very much for the, for the presentation there. It was very helpful and informative. What struck me, I think it was during the science one, as I was just trying to jot down all of the different years, different frameworks and different pieces there. And one of the things I would like to understand a little bit, how is our time for implementation and refinement? You know, you mentioned 2011, 2016, 2012, there's an MCAS update, and I think I noted during our MCAS presentations, you know, that whether there's alignment, testing alignment issues or curriculum alignment issues in the fourth and fifth grade relative to science.
Yeah, it won't touch, it won't, we don't have to worry right now.
No, 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 I'm just looking at what's our, that's a lot of stuff there. How are we doing in terms of being able to track and keep and do the transitions and effectively implement that into the classrooms?
We've been, we've been with FOS for six years. So just speaking quickly about the FOS implementation, the teachers have had the same units for six years, and there are some units that are continuing. And we're going to continue the implementation of the new units and chart how they do that. Teachers will also have, and the districts in Massachusetts have time to prepare for MCAS that reflects the 2016 standards. At this point, you don't have to worry about that. There is.
It's not worry about it, it's about the.
There's time to prepare.
No, 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 it's about the velocity of changes and our ability to implement them in a timeframe that's consistent with the. that's consistent with the changes that occur over that is really where I'm shooting at.
I can answer that, Daryl, for you. We, I mean, whenever you have a rewrite of a curriculum and the science curriculum has, has taken years and years to rewrite, I just happened to know somebody up there that was overseeing the project. And they thought they had it done and then it was run through an entirely different process and took another two years. But having said that, one of the reasons why we, we have a FOS consultant and we've kept the same one is to develop that relationship with our staff so that, that they're getting the supports that they need to integrate these concepts into their classroom. And, and having something somewhat compartmentalized in terms of organization helps and when you're implementing something new like this too. So the, the teachers do have that, that direction, which is pivotal in helping the change. We also have a connection with the actual fellow that designed the new science standards for the state of Massachusetts. And we have him, for lack of a better word, on retainer. For, Jerry Williams already met with him a couple of times this year. And we intend on bringing him in during the implementation process next year as well. But this, this also gives me an opportunity to go back to that position that we, we did not put in our budget this year because we had other priorities that needed to be taken care of. And at that time, I, I said to the school committee that rest assured, we'll be bringing that position again to the forefront for FY19. And you're beginning to, you saw this before, but it's kind of nice to have something in front of you and you have a conversation to realize that that, that position is, is an important position within our district as well. We've found different ways to make sure that, that our teachers are supported for next year. But beyond that, it's still going to require some, some efforts of somebody besides outside consultants. Does that help, Daryl?
Yeah, no, like I said, it's, you know, changes are coming and changes are happening continually here. And, you know, you know, it's not like the old days where the standard might have existed for 15 years and if it took you five years to update your curriculum, you still were living at 10 more years. You can't take five years if the standards are changing every three years.
Right.
And it sounds like we're on a path that will keep us at least a little ahead.
Correct with the standards. I understand what you're saying.
I think there. And, and we have sufficient, and that, you've touched on it, do we have sufficient resources to do that? Yeah, so, thank you.
Any questions at that?
No, thank you for the presentation.
All right, thank you. You know, spreading it out over two meetings is a good idea. It's a lot of information. But I, I think you can hear from the comments that came back from the school committee, we're very happy, very excited. It's, it's pretty inspiring to hear this every year and get an idea. Some of us get it because we see kids going through it and some of us have been through it in the, but not too recent past. But, but it keeps changing and it's a great time of year to listen to this. And as much effort as it takes to listen and for you guys to present, it's really well worth it. It's one of the, you know, most enervating presentations we get each year. So I really look forward to it. I really appreciate the amount of effort and work you guys do.
And I just want to touch, I like this format because we don't have to rush through the whole thing. We're tired by the end and it gives us a chance to pace it off and, and try to make sure that we, we get the whole thing in beautiful chops.
Thank you. And thank you all for your input.
And next on the agenda is the presentation from the middle school and the high school in terms of the Yarvis results that they've teased out and are working on and already have some programs in place, of course, that address some of the concerns and also result in some of the successes that we've seen throughout time. So I'll turn first of all over to middle school and I see Principal Temple is up and ready to give a hand as well.
Okay, so Sarah Dorfman apologizes that she couldn't be here, so I told her that we would step in. So we have some particular areas of concern in the school and I think that's been on our radar for quite some time. And that's always been stress, stress and bullying. You can see that the stress as a result of the academic workload is at 55%, which is above the aggregate. However, it has decreased over time. And I remember back in 2012, it was high and so we made some changes to our curriculum. We did a lot more fitness breaks, stress management activities. I in fact moved my classroom downstairs to be closer to the gym. So then we could really allow these kids to take those fitness breaks and to, to practice yoga and to practice mindfulness and to practice more, to do more physical activity. So, so that is a concern and it continues to be a concern. The big concern is definitely the pressure at home. We also are concerned at the middle school with the bullying. Students report being bullied in school is above the aggregate and that has increased over time in grade eight. And I think our particular concern too is with the electronics. And I think that's a cultural concern. We've discussed that over and over again. And we're going to go over different things that we're going to, that we've done to work on that. Just to add a piece about the eighth grade, that number 55% for the stress in eighth grade. We talked together as a group about why we thought that was the case. And realized that the survey is given in the spring, in March. And that's at almost the very end of when students are completing their science fair projects that they've been working on for a long time. They're also signing up for their classes in ninth grade at the high school. And they're also beginning MCAS instruct, MCAS testing. So, you know, that we talked a lot about just the timing of the survey. And if we would have that same, if we would have that same result if it were given, you know, in, in November or December. If we would have that same result. Just, there's a lot of factors that go into sort of weighing out why you have these responses. And that certainly stood out to all of us as, you know, certainly a factor in that high number. So areas of particular concern outside of school, we noticed were prescription medicines. You know, we've talked about too, like middle school of adolescents, you have different maturity levels and different exposure. So we're like, we were just wondering how the students read those questions and what their definition was of the prescription medicine. Was it that some kids still in eighth grade are thinking, oh, I took Advil. Is that prescription? I'm like, no, that's over the counter. You know, so we do wonder about that number of how the students interpreted it. We'd love to be able to talk to students too more about their interpretation of some of these questions. Outside of school too, the losing weight, students who are trying to lose weight is 9% higher than the aggregate. And that was up 11%. Again, timing, March is when we do our wellness and nutrition unit. So the kids are learning all about taking responsibility to make better choices when it comes to diet. And so they're understanding that, what they're putting into their body. So again, it's the same time that this survey is given, so we questioned that. When we looked though, we were pretty happy with the fact that it's not that kids were not eating at all. It's not that they were taking, you know, steps towards hurting themselves. What the concern was, was just that they were eating foods that, they were more aware of eating foods that were lower in fat. And I'm like, well, that's not such a bad thing, but again, we're going to look more, a little bit more at that. We did want to recognize that in 2015, for one of the questions, it was about breakfast. In 2015, we started the breakfast program. The first year was very slow to start. However, now if you walked into the middle school at 7:15 in the morning, that cafeteria is packed with students going and grabbing some breakfast. So I think that was our first year that we started it and it was really slow and so we've made some changes. Areas that have shown improvement were safety, which is really good, students wearing seatbelts. Smoking, which we're very excited about, and cigar smoking. And then the diet, we could see students who went without eating for 24 hours has gone down. So again, I think they are aware of making good choices when it comes to diet. I just wonder about those other questions, the timing for the month of March, because all our nutrition units going on there. The caffeinated beverages have gone down too, which is great because I do a big thing on energy drinks, so I'm glad to see that. And then the students who are taking hard and vigorous exercise has increased, which is, it's, it's up. So that's really nice too. I think we're really fortunate to have our wellness program where students have not only phys ed twice a week, but they also have my class, which is Wellness and Health Education, where we are exposing them to different types of activities. So really happy about that.
We have supports that are already in place at the middle school. We have a school adjustment counselor, Sarah Dorfman, who's available for individual and for group counseling throughout the week. We have a school psychologist available for individual and group counseling as well as completing evaluations. We have a health curriculum which addresses the above issues of concern. Students have health, like Trish said, two times a week. Students engage in fitness breaks, yoga breaks, mindfulness exercises during health class, and they also learn about ACT. The health curriculum helps kids define and understand bullying and also helps students understand, understanding what their goals are. We have a weekly advisory where between 20 to 28 students meet with two teachers to discuss various topics they may be concerned with. We do the SOS, signs of suicide and depression screening for grade seven. It's followed up by counselor interviews for students who may consider themselves to be at risk. And we also follow up in health class for all of the students. We have the interface referral service that's offered by the community. We have an executing, we have executive functioning support by our school psychologist. We have a really excellent academic support center for students who are demonstrating difficulty with their academics. And that's available all throughout the day and as well as after school. There's a nutrition presentation given by Mark O'Meara via the wellness committee. Progressive discipline regarding bullying, which is closely tracked and it's dealt with immediately. We have homework free weekends to reduce the academic stress. And we look at other issues that contribute to stress levels in March. And as I said before, the MCAS, the transition to high school, the making their schedules for high school, choosing classes, applying to private schools and things like that. And we also continue to focus on social emotional learning to improve real life connections. And again, as Trish mentioned, we have the breakfast program that started in 2015. So those are all things that we currently have in place.
I think we have a very strong staff that really, really focuses a lot on social emotional wellbeing and understanding the importance of self-esteem and that that high self-esteem is going to allow these students to be more resilient. So I think our staff is very aware of that and it's not just addressed in health class. It's in advisory and it's in within all the other curriculums. When we talk about interdisciplinary, I definitely see that a lot in the middle school.
One of the other pieces that is not on the paper, but I'll add is that Sarah and I meet with each of the grade level teams every week, every Thursday. We start in sixth and go to seventh and go to eighth and go, and then meet with Unified Arts to talk about student issues. So, so things don't go without being attended to. I mean, that's the longest span would be a week. And we really touch base and make sure that all students, we go through the whole list of students. So we're not talking about the same students every week. We're really touching base and making sure that, you know, any concerns about students are shared from week to week. So we really do stay on top of issues with students. You know, if somebody is, just notices that someone is behaving differently or seems not him or herself, we discuss that. So that's a really important piece of what we're able to do at the middle school.
So of course, there's always room for improvement, right? So our next steps are, we'd really like to see more parent involvement, especially when it comes to addressing stress, addressing bullying and even some other issues like body image issues. So we'd love to get more, more input from parents. And that's always been something that we, we seek out and we want, but we would like to see that happen more so. We'd like to invite some former students to give feedback. I know that I used to do that. I used to have some high school students come back in and speak to the eighth graders. I think I, we're going to start that up again and then kind of give them advice on managing stress and what to expect and helping the transition. We also are thinking about bringing back in some guest speakers, whether it's Chris Heron to present or a couple of years ago, we've had the Cam Fel Productions, which addressed addiction. And also, we also had one production on diversity and celebrating diversity and recognizing everyone's differences. And it addressed bullying too. We'd like to work more with the wellness committee to consider some more other outreach presentations and exploring more free programs out there. And again, looking at our curriculum, we have a wonderful culture and climate at the middle school where we really focus on the life skill of acknowledge, hear, tell. That's always been addressed in seventh and eighth grade. And so we're going to look at maybe starting that in sixth grade. And that we believe will really help with the climate and the bullying that has to take in place.
We really have talked a lot as a group about ways to get this information out. And we were having a discussion the other day, talking about, you know, when we have someone from the DA's office, for example, come and talk about cyber safety, you know, they give the whole presentation to, you know, 350 students during the day. And then we offer that same presentation for parents and you get seven or 14. You know, and, and really the hope always is that the auditorium is full, that you have 400 people that night. And we don't, we don't get those people. And so, you know, I guess someone made a point the other day to say, okay, so if you got seven, you got seven. And maybe those seven will go and talk to seven more and then you got 14. So, you know, I guess we can't look at those, only getting seven people in as being a failure, you got seven. So that, it's, it's important to continue to do those things. We talked at Admin Council this week about other ways to get information out. If there was a, a site where parents could look up information or have articles there. Just to be creative about those ways because it is hard for people to come out at night and, and do things in their busy lives. And so we have to be creative about how we get the information out. And sometimes, you know, we're acknowledging that our weekend updates are chock full. And so, you know, an important article might get lost in a weekend update where it might be important to, for us as an, as an admin council to look at other ways to get information out.
Just one thing I'd like to add, the, the organization of the middle school with the, the grade team approach makes a tremendous difference when you're dealing with adolescents. And when I'm at the middle school, and it's not just the Littleton Middle School, but I think schools that utilize this approach have an opportunity to develop a closeness that schools that may not use a middle of a, middle school approach are having trouble replicating. And if you, you decrease the number of students that are dealing with, or decrease, sorry, decrease the number of teachers that are dealing with students, you, you result, it results in a, in a development of a closer relationship. When I'm at the middle school, for example, our students are comfortable talking to staff. So I see a lot of informal interactions and that's what I'm looking for. When I'm, when I'm trying to, to grasp what we're seeing in the Yarvis survey, one of the things I look for is, is informal interactions of students and staff. When I talk to the adjustment counselor, what kinds of referrals are, is, is the counselor getting? Are they teacher referrals or students are just coming down to talk about things? I see a lot of that happening. And so as a superintendent, when I'm trying to, to give advice and, and help the middle school grow and take care of some of these issues that we're seeing, those are kind, those are the kinds of things that I look for. And I feel good and, and comfortable that our students within that school have, have adult mentors that they feel comfortable talking to. Because part of, part of dealing with, with, with some of these challenges in society, not just our community, is that you need, kids need somebody to talk to that they trust and they feel comfortable talking to. And, and parents play a key role there. But it, it takes more than parents to, to be successful at, at helping some of our students make good choices. And I think that's key to any plan that addresses some of the things that we're, we're addressing with adolescents.
Questions or comments to say to the middle school?
No, I mean, I really appreciate the, the looking into the, to the different pieces there. And I think the, the challenge is, is getting the parental side involved there. You know, not just from the, you know, the cyber safety aspect of, of the internet, but the bullying aspect of it. You know, because, you know, we have them for six hours, their parents have them for the other 18. And, and there's another side of that that's not always factored into the partnership that needs to happen in terms of, of the checks and balances of behaviors, you know, that we can try to reinforce within the schools. But it's got to be reinforced outside of the school also.
Yeah, good. Takes the village.
I have a lot of comments. Some of them I'll save for perhaps a more general discussion after we get the high school presentation because we do have a lot of similarities between the two schools and the strength. the two schools and the strengths and, and needs. First, I just really love the way that we are engaging with this head-on as a community, and we're not like one of those communities that sort of skirts around the issue because it can be uncomfortable for, for folks. I, we've been doing this for such a long time, that we totally take it for granted that, of course, we're talking about it. But I think it's really important that we do, because if we don't acknowledge a problem, we're not gonna be able to help address it. I am also really excited about the school breakfast program a couple of years ago, when that started coming in. And I saw a report today that made it look like there's gonna be a targeted investment in more lower-performing and also less fortunate communities to implement school breakfasts during the first period of class, because that's, you wanna look at their kids. And I'm just sitting here thinking like, hey, we're, we're ahead of the curve. Still, still room to grow, but I think it's really exciting that we're, we're doing that work, because if the students hungry, they're not gonna be able to learn, and they are gonna be more stressed out. And all these things have really correlated in a lot of different ways. And I think being mindful of that is helpful. With anxiety and stress, I think it's, I'm glad that the middle school plan includes a community forum and talking about it, because I think, and not just with parents, but with students, too. Because I don't know what stressing out students these days. We, I could guess, but to, until we really hear from them and engage them, they're not even gonna feel supported in talking about it, and when we can engage in those conversations. As I know both of you do throughout your day on an individual basis, I think this can be, I think it's gonna be really meaningful. I was a little disappointed that sleep, sleeplessness wasn't included in this, this plan or in the high school plan, but we can talk about it at the end. And I think I understand why. Our numbers are similar to other communities around us, so it doesn't leap off the page as something, oh, this is a Littleton problem. But I, I think it is important for us to also say, our students aren't getting enough sleep, and it is a problem, and we do care about it. Even if we don't know what we're going to do about it, to say, we're gonna get together, we're gonna figure this out, and we're gonna work on this, I think is important. And Mrs. Bonacar, I do wanna say again, the way with which we embed these types of things into the curriculum, and you're moving a classroom close to the gym, and having conversations with students. And as Kelly was talking about, having a staff member in the building who a student can talk to and trust. Having gone through, having been a student in both of your schools, Charlotte, when you were at the high school, I know that both of you are really dedicated to that, and it is phenomenal, and it makes such a world of difference to students, to me, to a lot of my peers, to my siblings, and I am sure it is still today. So I'm just very grateful for your continuing to engage in this work when it's after nine o'clock, and you're both gonna be at school early tomorrow morning. And I think this is really important. I think this conversation is one of the most important conversations we have all year at the school committee and as a community. So, I want to say thanks for that.
Thank you.
I think you're making some tremendous strides, and very happy with everything I'm hearing. Anytime you can increase the communication with the students, I think it's, you're moving in the right direction, so I'm very happy.
So, hi, I'm Maureen McMahon. I'm the school psychologist at the high school. For those of you who, who don't know me.
Anyone need to take a little exercise break? A little workout clothes tonight for ya, anyone? Come on, stand up. We've always, come on, we've always been sitting. Stand up.
I can do it for one minute during Spanish every day. You can do it right now.
Come on, just a quick stretch. Keep you awake. I do apologize for my outfit. I came right from school, went to dance, and then went to softball, and now I'm here. And those activities were for me, or not for my children. So, yes, we, I'm Meredith Perry, the K-12 curriculum coordinator for Health and Security here in support, obviously.
And any help questions relate to her?
Here to help.
So I just wanted to start with some of the areas of concern in school. So the first area that kind of slightly increased was incidents of being bullied. And when we looked at this data, we really thought, what do kids consider being bullied? Because that's kind of a catchphrase nowadays versus what is the legal definition of bullying? So really, the legal definition of bullying is repeated pattern of physical or emotional harm. So Dr. Harrington and I, prior to this meeting, kind of looked at incidents of bullying in the high school over the last three years. So just, so you have a kind of a sense of formal reports of bullying. Between 2014 and 2015, we had two formal reports and one confirmed report of bullying. Between 2015 and 2016, we had six formal complaints of bullying and two confirmed cases of bullying. And this year, we have had two formal complaints and one confirmed case. So, sometimes there's not enough information to substantiate the data, or it's inconclusive. So another area, which Trish talked about in the middle school, is the incidences of, incidences of stress related to academic workload is pretty high. Sixty-three percent of our students are reporting stress, seventy percent of girls, and fifty-four percent of boys related to academic workload. So just anecdotally, in my position as the school psychologist, I am seeing a lot of kids with, with stress related to academics. There's a very rigorous academic workload. You just heard from all the teachers, and they do a fantastic job. But, but it does result in stress in our students, and we're gonna talk about ways we're, we're addressing that. I think we're above the curve ball. We're all aware that it's an, an issue, and we are taking steps to kind of correct it as much as possible. So the other area that came as concern was the number of students offered, sold, or given drugs on school property increased from four percent in 2014 to six percent in 2016. So I just also, we, those were kind of bad news inside of school. I wanna go over areas we have improved in. So one area is, again, it's the same with the middle school, is use, use of cigarette products has decreased. We're substantially below the state average, and we've gone down considerably since the last time the kids were surveyed. So that's really good news. The same thing with marijuana. We're below the state average, considerably below the state average, and we've decreased since the last time the survey was given. There has been a slight decrease also in the number of students who are reporting ever having sexual intercourse, from twenty-seven percent in 2014 to, to twenty-five percent in 2016, and the state average is thirty-six percent. So, I also wanted to address areas of particular concern outside of school. We had a little bit of an increase in kids not wearing a seatbelt from two percent, in 2014 to six percent. I'm sorry, from two, two percent in 2014 to four percent in 2017. And the reason we wanted to mention it is something so preventable in the case of, case of accidents. And we actually had a presentation, which I'll talk about in a minute today, so it's kind of good timing. And students reporting cyberbullying has increased as well. Use of prescription drugs not prescribed to you is above the aggregate and has increased. And the other thing that came up was sixteen percent of our students reported that they had sent or received sexually explicit photos over the last twelve months. So, I just wanted to go over LHS supports already in place. We have a clinical team that can, is comprised of the two guidance counselors and myself at the high school. All students have to take a health curriculum. Do you wanna talk a little bit about kind of how you're addressing?
Yes, we are focusing, as you know from my, did the curriculum last, our last time, that we are focusing on skills-based. So there, we're trying to get them to have those skills, the stress management skills, which is our next unit that's actually coming up. And so, instead of trying to take away the stressors in their life, give them the skills in order for them to cope with the stressors in their life. Because once they get out into, you know, real world, the work, workforce, you can't just ask your boss to take your stressors away. You need to have those skills to cope with it. So I think that's something that's really important, that we're really trying to, to focus on. And it's not just in my curriculum, but it's also across, across the board, too, with, with, you know, the interdisciplinary connections that we have been talking about all night. So I think that that's really important. We also had the presentation today, which talked about underage drinking and the dangers of it, which was also connected through with the biology teacher, to have the, how it affects your brain. So not only, you know, you know, make, I always have my tagline of be safe and make right choices, that I tell the kids every weekend, but also the biological aspect of it, of this is actually why things are happening to you. So I think that that was also kind of a really important connection for the students to kind of get today. And it, it showed the mental health connection with the substance abuse in a very kind of general way to say, you know, your brain and the way that, that we handle things. So I think that, that's a good connection. I also do a research project, which brings us back around again to the accessing information, which was a question that you asked about reliable and valid sources. So the students need to research twenty different drugs, and they need to find a reliable and valid source, so that they can understand how it affects their bodies. And so that kind of goes along, it kind of ties everything in what we've kind of talked about tonight. And so that's just a brief, again, connection.
Thank you. And you guys did a great job with the presentation today. They also had Officer Corey talk about the legal implications of like, things like social hosting and, you know, that kind of thing, which I thought was a really interdisciplinary approach, which was really well received by our students. And if you go by the high school, there's a car that was wrecked in an accident. So it's a reminder right before the prom that, you know, drink, not to drink and drive, and not to drink, really.
Just a shout out to Detective Corey, because I asked him at like twelve noon on Monday. I'm like, just a reminder, we need, you know, I have that car, and by one o'clock, it was out there. So, his connections really pulled through. So, thank you to Detective Corey.
I thought, I thought it was a really good presentation today. So, the other things that we have in place are the signs of suicide screening, which Cheryl talked about at the middle school. We also do at the high school for our ninth and twelfth graders. So, they all fill out a paper survey, and if there's concerns, if they're answering so many questions, myself or one of the guidance counselors will follow up with them. We have the interface referral service. So if you're not familiar with that, it basically matches a student's insurance to healthcare providers. It's, it's funded by the town of Littleton, and it's through William James College. So if we have a question about, okay, a kid has an eating disorder, or a kid has anxiety or depression, they help match with the insurance. So that's been a really great resource for our students. We also have executive functioning support. So, when we say executive functioning, we mean things like planning, organization, time management, task initiation. How this is linked to anxiety is that when our kids wait till the last minute to do everything, they're super anxious. Our kids are doing a ton of different activities, sports, jobs, the theater, and they get super anxious and aren't able to manage their time and their ability. So, executive functioning really comes into play. We did an extended advisory for the ninth and grade students. I also do, for selective students who have really difficult time, I do individual sessions on executive functioning. As Mrs. Frindery mentioned, Mrs. Berlinger is teaching executive functioning skills in her curriculum as well, which has been really great, and we, we hope to expand that. We've also had a consultant through our clinical team, Peg Dawson. She's this expert throughout, you know, throughout the country, and she's right up in, in New Hampshire. So she's been able to come down and consult with our clinical team on this issue. So that's been a great initiative this year. We also have a tutoring center. It's been two years, I think, now that we've had the tutoring center. So it's available to all students, every mod. So we have a power professional who services it. We also have student peer tutors. We have a volunteer through the community who helps with math. He comes in twice a week. So that's been a great support. We've also done, in October of 2016, and I know you planned this, we'll talk about that, you did an extended advisory on bullying, and you have them watch the bystander?
BystanderRevolution.com. It's a great resource that has research-based lesson plans already in place. So why reinvent the wheel? When we find these wonderful resources, we utilize them, especially when they're free. So that was something that we were able to show a little clip, have a great discussion in our small advisories. In our advisories, it's one teacher, twelve to fifteen students. I think fifteen or sixteen is, is what we try to max it as, or at. And sometimes when we have these discussions, we put two teachers together within the same grade level. And we'd like to keep the grade levels, you know, and we don't wanna have a senior as a freshman advisory. We wanna keep, you know, with their peers, when they're in their same grade. So it really helps, you know, good discussions to kind of evolve.
What was that site again?
BystanderRevolution.com.
The high school was also fortunate enough, the high school and the middle school, to have Jessica Minahan come in and present in January. She's a board-certified behavioral analysis on anxiety and how to, strategies to manage anxiety in the classroom. It was really well-received, and we had a subsequent training in April. So, I was really fortunate. Again, the professional development in this district has been great, with Peg Dawson and Jessica Minahan being able to consult. I already talked, we already talked about the MOF accident. So I'm gonna go over to next steps. I think we're gonna continue the discussion about bullying, both by having an advisory next year, and also a partnership with the Middlesex Partnership Abuse, host a forum for parents and students next fall on cyberbullying. We wanna plan a parent forum on the safety and proper storage of prescription medication, because that came up, that kids are taking drugs that are not prescribed to them. This, I don't know if you guys have heard of ESPERT. It stands for the Screening Brief Intervention and Referral to Treatment. So basically, all guidance department, nurses and myself, we had to go to this training. I went on Tuesday on, we're gonna have to screen all of one grade next year for alcohol and drugs. So marijuana, alcohol use prescription drugs, and anything else they can use for getting high. So they're individual meetings with kids. So we're gonna be rolling this out for the fall. Again, it's a screening. They recommended we do it with our ninth or tenth grade students, because it's really a preventative tool, to prevent drug, drug use and alcohol use. Another thing we're doing, we're gonna do some preventive trainings, like on teen substance abuse. For example, Project Purple or Improbable Players. We're still thinking about what we're gonna do for next year, but something like that would be helpful. And there's, Dr. Harrington told me about a screening of If Only, which is on prescription drug use. It's a movie that we can show the kids next year.
Some drafts the parents, too.
Oh, that's a good thing.
Yeah, the whole, the whole community.
Go community.
Okay. Thank you for, for clarifying. The other thing, just kind of working in the guidance council, guidance department, that I've noticed is, sometimes teachers plan a bunch of different tests on the same day, and then I have kids coming down, oh, four things on the same day. So I think what we wanna do is bring it to the leadership team and have more collaboration between departments, when possible, to prevent the major freshman research paper and a biology test or whatever, all on the same day, to reduce the stress levels of our students, because that's something, I guess, we hear a lot about. And teachers and administrators will assess homework and grading practices as part of our school improvement plan. Like, I already talked a little bit about our executive functioning skills. Again, we wanna expand that program to the other grades. And I, I think that's basically a kind of an overview.
Just one thing I'd like to add. Thank you, it was very thorough. When, when I look at all of our schools and, and look at the YARBA survey, I know it's just the middle school and the high school, but that doesn't mean that there aren't other things that, that we see in the other two schools. There, everybody's heard the saying that throughout time, schools have worn more hats, and, and we continue to wear more hats. And I don't know where, where that endpoint is. And I guess a longer-term education, I'm gonna make the statement, there isn't an endpoint. We, we need to, we need to adjust to, to the things that other organizations aren't able to do, and, and because we, we have the most precious resource in the world, and that's the, our students, because they are our future. But having said that, there's a role that, that I've had many conversations with, with the leadership team and beyond, that doesn't exist in our school system yet. And, and I'm, I'm trying to figure out what that role is. It, it's not a BCBA. It's not a social worker. It's not another psychologist. It, it's, it's somebody who, who has the skills to work with students and, and be able to deal with some of these issues that are on the rise in, in, in youth in society. And the closest I can come, and I hate giving And the closest I can come, and I hate giving a label because I don't, I really don't have one, but a behavioral analyst to a certain degree, like Jessica Minahan. If we could clone her, that would be wonderful. But there, there is a void and especially at the high school, where traditionally for many, many years, counselors are seen as, for the most part, as people who help students select courses and get into college. So we have an adjustment counselor in middle, in our middle school. Well, all of a sudden we go to a high school, and this is common throughout the country. We don't have an adjustment counselor anymore. We have counselors that specialize in other things. And, and you know, when I look at this from a, from a professional point of view or a point of view of an educator, those students that are having challenges, they just don't disappear because we put them in another school and they're a year older. So as we, we talk about potential solutions to, as we move forward, I think part of the solution is, is identifying what our most prevalent needs are for some of our students. And if stress is one of, and it is, one of those prevalent needs, what do we need to do to get some specializing in, in this district to deal with it? That has the expertise to deal with it. You can only ask the educators that we have to wear so many hats. And if you go beyond what their capable of doing, then you don't see success. So I'm not saying that we can't do a lot of good things. We are and will continue to do that. But I still see that, that niche that is, has evolved and, and doesn't have a label yet within, within all schools. And I'll just kind of leave it at that before we go on to some questions.
That's a really good comment to follow. I think, well firstly, thank you. All the praise I leaped on the middle school team, I would again reiterate here. We've got such a wonderful team throughout the district working on these issues. And I am very grateful and always sort of fluff up my chest a little bit when I'm talking to folks from other school districts, talking about a lot of these really challenging issues regarding student health and anxiety. And I think our district is definitely ahead of the curve. And as Kelly was saying, it's, it's a lot to wrestle with. And whether it's a position or a plan or a new way of thinking about it, I think school districts all over the country are trying to figure this out. And I think we're certainly well positioned to lead the pack in that. And I'm excited about that. Specific to the high school, I think it's really great the amount of presentations and the large variety of ways that we're engaging with students. And I know that having been a, as Mike said earlier, a somewhat recent high school, high school student. It's getting further and further.
It is.
That's right. I know that the team we have set up is really prepared. The guidance team and the school nurse and the administration, teachers are really set up for a lot of the day-to-day things where if a student is coming in and they have, they have four tests on the same day or there is something going wrong at home or all of these things at once. I think we've got a really great team who's really compassionate and caring and able to handle a situation right when it pops up, which is important because we need to be dynamic that way. I think what school districts across the country struggle with is how to do that on the long term and do more, more of the preventative stuff. And we have these great conversations each year on student health and risk behaviors and what we can do to address it. My fear is that because we are, as a district, doing all of these things throughout the year, including all of these things we're talking about, we're sort of doing them without going back to the original plan. Not to say we're deviating from the plan, but I think that, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think that we don't have a school-wide or to some extent a district-wide narrative about how we're going about addressing this. And I know that's, that might not be the most appropriate way to go from the short term to the long term on this, on this issue. It's just one idea.
Well, one thing we've done, Rita's kind of established a clinical team this year where we didn't do this in the past, where the guidance departments from the elementary school, the BCBA's from the elementary school and the whole, the counselors and the psych, myself and other psychologists all meet as a team. So that's been helpful in terms of kind of having a little bit of continuity to know what's going on in different buildings. So that's kind of moving forward, I think that's been really helpful.
That's excellent. And I, I heard you mention the clinical team earlier and I was like, wow, we are cutting edge.
And just to feedback on that, Tricia and I, we meet regularly. We're in communication daily, just to make sure that what we are doing is also in line with our health curriculum. And so that's something that we, we're constantly, you know, I just found this great article or, you know, I'm doing this instead or here I found a middle school version of exactly what I'm doing or, you know, vice versa, I found a high school version. So we're constantly in communication, just six to 12 where our health curriculum is.
I know how dynamic we've become in terms of responding to the needs year to year, where if we see an uptick in something, we'll say, okay, well, what's a proven way to address it? And we go out, rather you go out and you find a curriculum tool or a presenter and you make it happen and we just respond to it and you just think, that's, I think that's excellent. Mike, would you like to save districts?
No, I think now's the time to dive right in.
This is, these are last questions for the two of you, just as a conversation. When it comes to school, school start times and other ways that we can provide support to our students and reduce stress, whether it's the school lunches or homework policies that we've adopted over the years. We know that it's always a balancing act. It's kind of like professional development where we really know that you should get a lot out of it, but it comes at a cost and it's not really, you know, there's no such thing as a free lunch. There's no such thing as a free breakfast either. But these programs do have a benefit to, to the students. And so if we can, what I wish we had done tonight on the, on the sleep piece was say, yeah, at the high school, 90% of our students aren't getting enough sleep every night. And that's been consistent for the last several years. And it's not an outlier by any means throughout our region or throughout the Commonwealth or even the country. And we're probably a hair or two better than most districts on that issue. But just because we're marginally better does not mean we are in good shape. And I think it's important for us to be able to say, yeah, we have a problem. It's not unique to us and we're, but we recognize the problem and we're going to try to face it head on. We've had a lot of conversations at this, at the school committee about life administrative level about how would we address these issues? With the sleep issue, the biggest way would be start time, start time. It's not the only way. Certainly talking to parents and students about time management and sleep and not looking at your phone right before bed and things like that. It's certainly part of the, part of the puzzle as well. But I, and we also know that we're very limited in terms of the resources we could have to implement a more healthy start time. But I think at least talking about it makes sure that in the community, it's still a squeaky wheel. We don't want to have a problem and not recognize it every year and not have it be part of the plan. And if we can't execute on that plan because of resources or because of other things, well, we'll have a conversation about it and we might have to move it on.
I think it's interesting point, but it's one comment I'd like to make is, starting school later doesn't, the idea of starting school later, at least as I understand it, is not to address necessarily the lack of sleep they're getting. It's the time of day which they are ready and most able to be at their best. Because just starting an hour and a half later doesn't mean they're going to get more sleep because they might just change the way they, they attack their day. So I just think we need to be cognizant of that. And I think that the lack of sleep is such a multifaceted issue that goes, might very well go beyond the ability of the school district to truly make a significant difference. You know, I know different kids, different styles of kids and there are plenty of kids who get enough or could get enough sleep and are choosing not to because of the way they want to live their life. It's not always a question of, I just didn't have the opportunity to get sleep. They had the opportunity, they just chose not to take advantage of it. Whether it's because I really wanted to be a straight A student and it took me that many hours of the day to do it or I'm a voracious consumer of social media and I can't let go. I like to watch the shows and they're only on at this time or it could be anything. So I just think we need to be careful about how much impact. And if we overcompensate, we may find that we're going to penalize or change the, the outcome for a different set of students that we're not quite thinking about right now.
So I, I guess the, the one thing that struck me on, on the, or at least I'd want to make sure the conversation when we, we're talking about start time, it's not a high school start time, it's district-wide. Because when we talked about it last fall or last thing there, we talked about a bunch of different options. And what it really was was who was, who was going to get the worst end of the trade-offs there. And I don't want us, any solution that we look at, end up shorting a whole block of other students there. I think we have to look at it as a district problem. You know, I know you mentioned our, our bus contract is coming up for renewal or rebid, not renewal, rebid next year. Do we actively ask for two bids, one for a three bus run, one for a two bus run? So we actually have concrete information about what's, what are our true options there? And then unfortunately, they laughed, but as we talked about parent outreach, what's the parent's input on, you know, their, you know, at 11 o'clock at night, they're not at the school, they're at home, you know, who does a Starbucks run for a double latte with four shots of espresso in it?
Chipotle run at my house.
No, but I mean, you know, from caffeine usage and other things there that have massive effects on your ability to sleep there. You know, so it's not just a school thing. It, there's a, there's a parental side there that also goes in terms of, you know, what are they, what's that family dynamic that it may be, you know, having an effect on that type of thing there? So I, I don't think we could, you're right, Mike, I don't think we can address it in isolation here. And I'm concerned that we don't develop a solution that favors only, only one part of our population.
I mean, Alex is right, I mean, it's a resource issue. The ideal thing would be to start all the schools at the same time, about nine or 9:30, you know. That would be ideal. It's not going to happen because we would need, you know, we would need buses. We would need a single bus run with however many buses that we need to get the kids there. But that would be the ideal outcome. We all know that, you know, it's just a question of how close can we get to that, given the constraints we have? At least as far as earlier start, I mean, a later start time. The sleep deprivation thing or the lack or the less than ideal amount of sleep they're getting, there's definitely, the district is a contributing factor to that. There's no, we put these kids, we give them a lot of work. They ask for a lot of it and they're, they're, you know, they're glomming onto it. But we can definitely think about what strides we can make to help them achieve balance, I guess.
I don't want to rehash the school start time issue tonight because I know we've talked about that. I just wanted to say that I think it should be a part of the conversation.
For sure.
Going forward. And certainly it's a big, it's a heavy lift. And for a lot of districts that have tried it and done so successfully or that couldn't do it.
Well, the other thing you said was, we're not an outlier in terms of, you know, where we are with the sleep thing. Nor are we an outlier in terms of understanding that a later start time would be beneficial. And in some ways, I think that that would be the easiest way to get it to happen is if we weren't trying to implement it as an outlier. If it was a, you know, Commonwealth-wide type of acknowledgement and supported financially and in practice, I think that would help us all out, you know, so.
What, I would just ask that, I know our teams have left, hopefully to get some sleep of their own. That when they do go through these plans, that they include sleep as something that we're trying to address, whether it's through start times, which we can't decide in a health curriculum coordination meeting, unfortunately. We're talking about time management and stress management and how that all fits together. I do think we have a responsibility here to work on this issue and we have. And we've really grappled with it over the last couple of years. And I just hope that, if you'll excuse me, we continue to, to do so.
Easy for you to say.
Yeah, I know, I know. And I do appreciate the growth that we've had on this issue and the really genuine attempts that we've made in the past to get it, we didn't quite get it, but I'm hopeful we will in the near future. And I think we just need to continue talking about it because if it does come down to a resource issue, I think we should talk about it now and make sure the community knows.
Right.
This is, this is where we are.
To Daryl's point, if we can get the information, that'll help us explain if we can't do something now, we'll have a better understanding of why we couldn't do it. Or is this is the cost you would have to pay to have it? These are the opportunity costs you're going to miss by virtue of doing this instead. Do you support that decision? And, you know, we can, we can come together on that. You know, and you're right, I think that it's important to keep talking about it even when we can't do it. But it's also important that it's one aspect of, or one potential thing we could do. There are many others that we've already touched on and we can continue, that are less resource intensive, but may very well be impactful or just as impactful. Certainly if we can get multiple, you know, multiple faceted push on this type of thing, I think we can start to cut into it and then looking for later down the road for things that might take longer to implement because of the resource restrictions.
One thing you've touched on, it is multifaceted and we don't have a lot of data or research in terms of how students are sleeping or why they can't sleep. And that's something that, that we need to think about as a, as a district as well. I mean, we're, we're assuming that if we create the condition, kids are going to sleep.
Right.
That's not true. Some will, but there are a lot of people, including adults, that have sleep issues. In fact, if you look at the population at large, I can't quote you the exact percentage, but it's well over 35% that have some type of sleep deprivation to, to deal with. So I, I think that needs to be part of that conversation too. Maybe the, one of the ways we can do that is to start having those conversations. Have we asked our high school students? And, you know, within a comfortable, trusting environment, you know, is it, is it the amount of time you have to sleep? Or is it during that time, are you sleeping? Or can you sleep? And Alex, you touched on the fact that, you know, if you're, you're looking at screens or watching television just before you go to bed, that does interfere with your, your amount of sleep and sleep patterns that you have. So there, there are a lot of things to consider. I am a fan, and you know this, of starting school later. And it would be nice and financially very difficult to do to have school start at the same time as the chairman mentioned. But we, you know, it's not just us. A lot of high schools are starting in the country, 7:30 or 7:15 in the morning. And that is, that is rather, but I am concerned about that other side of the story that isn't getting enough attention as well.
Just before, I'm certainly not happy to continue the discussion, but there's two things I want to think about. One is, can we integrate the, sort of the, this wellness type of thought into the curriculum updates next year so that it's its own separate topic? I don't want it to necessarily be, what do we get, the YRBS every two years?
Every two years.
We shouldn't be waiting every two years to think about where we are in terms of implementing programs or measuring our, our outcomes relative to some of the efforts we've made. And then the other thing that struck me was Tricia Bonacor talked about inviting students, older students back down to talk. There's a terrific internet phenomenon called It Gets Better regarding LGBT where people, older people that have gone through the LGBT experience created these videos that are now available where it gets better and this is how it got better for me. Here are my coping mechanisms, here is my, you know, story arc, whatever it was. And it, it seems like it was a very positive project. That maybe on a very local scale, you know, it gets better. When, you know, a high school student telling the middle school student, it will get better. You know, this is what happened to me, this is my story. Or a college student, recent graduate, it gets better. You know, you'll go through this, you're going to get to college, it's going to be great. You know, we can think about it and see how that goes. So that might be an interesting tool to explore. That might be resonant with, you know, the way our students consume life's lessons, which is a little bit different than, than maybe we did when we were, it certainly is. Other comments?
I just had one for our presenters that are right here.
Which is fine, that's fine.
Thank you for your presentation. But the one thing, and maybe you can pass it back through, is, you know, I, I But the one thing, and maybe you can pass it back through, is, you know, I saw, like, the advisory on bullying, the advisory on this, I'd like us to make sure we don't think of these as one-and-done kinds of things, maybe five minutes, once every two weeks, three weeks, kinds of things, that constantly reinforce, but not overdrive the things there, so that it's not, like I said, this one-and-done, we, I don't think that's the most effective way, type of thing there, and so just be thinking about that as we, as we look at the reinforcement aspects.
I'll pass that along, we definitely want to emphasize certain themes, one of the themes of in October is the, it's a bullying prevention month, and so we want to embed that into our calendar, the annual, that now that's, yeah, that's a one-time, that was, it's an all-school emphasis.
Right.
And so that's an example, and we want to have sort of, and we were discussing this at the, at the high school leadership team meeting recently, about having certain recurring themes with certain grades, that would be, would be really structured, as we plan out, so that there's a common experience for students as they go through, but it's not overly repetitive either.
Right, there's a balance there, but.
Yeah, agree, thanks, I'll pass it on.
And certainly at the middle school, just to comment, we, there's not a day that goes by that we're not talking about, instead of bullying, ways to treat people appropriately in your community, in your school community, it's every day.
Right, and it goes back to even the themes that we have with the VOIOD, is responsible usage, right, you know, there's subtle ways of reinforcing it throughout the whole time, where it's not a, oh no, here it comes, a talk.
That's definitely endemic to schools, yeah.
Any other comments?
Thank you.
Again, I really think we, if we incorporate this as sort of a, kind of like a curriculum subset, I think that would be meaningful, would be beneficial.
I think that's a great idea, and that's what we'll do for next year.
I don't know if you guys want to, your curriculum nights next year?
Well, yeah, I hear you, well, it doesn't exactly, it doesn't have to be during the curriculum nights, it could just be something we put on the agenda. Budget visioning, would we have?
Well, I think, I think what we, if you don't mind doing this, if we could go into the rest of the agenda first, then we'll do, see how you guys are feeling.
What I'm thinking is, is let's table it right now, and invite Alex to come back. I know, even though he's not running, I'm pretty sure we can entice him back for particular topics, is that okay, Alex? Can we maybe do that?
Sure, I'll see, you know, I'm booking myself out on Thursdays, thank you.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, sure, I can come back.
We'll make it work. Because I don't want to shortchange it.
Yeah, that's what I'm worried, I appreciate that.
That's my, my biggest thing, and I think it would be good for us to put a couple of this in, maybe just a general discussion on the budget process and strategies for next year as well, so I just want to make sure we give it the deliberation it requires.
Attention.
All right, the land transfer motion?
Motion's in, I'll show on your agenda, and Steve has a diagram that we inserted, or Dorothy inserted it today, and I also included the motion that we made in the fall, just so you, you were able to look at it. This, this motion, when I looked at, the original motion and this motion, there's no need, in my opinion, to deal with that first motion, and especially, we don't need to rescind it, I don't think there's anything that would need rescinding, so I wanted you to have it, though, just so that, you know, rather than me just say that, you've got an opportunity to look at it. So the, this motion was sent to me from our town administrator, by his attorney, the town attorney, and Daryl and I have had a chance to look at it, and Mike as well, and we're fine with this motion, and the actual diagram is up on the screen. Daryl, would you?
Yeah, so if everything went off as planned, the selectmen should have voted Monday to release the school to the school department. You know, just an artifact of old town, you know, bookkeeping that hadn't been done. So they should have voted Monday to release Lot 1 to the school department, and then what we're doing at this point is cleaning up, we're going to release Town Hall back to the town. And this diagram here sort of reflects that concept that we talked about several months ago, of sort of splitting it kind of over by Town Hall, and letting, you know, eventually having all of, having them control all that parcel. And we've already got the motion out for the site to release it for the library, which we all voted at Town Meeting there. So it's a two-part thing, we have to release the property to the town, and then Town Meeting does the final part of the transfer on it. So the selectmen have asked us to vote this motion tonight, so that we can get it all set up.
Any questions or comments on any of this?
Do you want the, do you want us to have a motion that's in the packet?
Red.
Please.
Any other discussion before we entertain the motion? All right, fire away.
Mike Mazzone would appreciate this, but.
Okay, he's not here.
I make a motion to declare a surplus of the portions of the land acquired by order taken recorded in the Middlesex South District Registry of Deeds and Book 4506, Page 249, and Book 7729, Page 552. Deed from Agassiz Hager, dated February 21st, 1868, and June 30th, 1868, and deed from Austin L. and Albert W. Hartwell, filed for the Middlesex South Registry District of the Land Court as Document 251062, Certificate 14552, as shown as Lot 2, Town Offices containing Lot 7.8 Acres. On a plan entitled Town Parcel U19-21-0, Delimination Littleton, Massachusetts, dated March 27th, 2017, and prepared by the Town of Littleton, so that care, custody, control, and management of said land may be transferred by Town Meeting from the School Committee for School Purposes to support a selectman for general municipal purposes, and to vote to support the May 1st, 2017 Annual Town Meeting, Article 19.
Seconded.
Well done. Motion seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. All right, great.
Thank you.
All right, new business, school choice slots.
We have a table, I think it's on the last page of your packet, and.
I like how you said that.
Yes, the last page of the packet, I'll even say it again. And what it does is it compares the current year to what we project for next year, and before I even go over any of the numbers with you, the, the school choice seats that we're recommending this evening to you, it certainly doesn't mean we're going to fill all those seats, we just saw an opportunity, and you know that we're dependent on that revenue more than we want to be, and having said that, that's not the driving force, our current configuration within our schools can handle that increase in enrollment. So as you can see, it was very methodical as you go through it. So this year, we had an, on an average, 89 school choice students, and next year, if all of the seats were filled, which I just said they most likely won't be, we would have 100. So you can see in the blue column on the right-hand side, the seats that we're recommending, and we open up kindergarten, five seats, and then we go to grade five, four seats, and if you go across the left, you can see the lower enrollments, which justifies adding those seats. And if you go into middle school, grade eight, six seats, notice we have a smaller class, and high school, grade 10, or grade 9, I'm sorry, grade 9, or, let me go back again, grade 10, getting late, grade 10, five seats, grade 11, two seats, and grade 12, two seats, so for a total of 24 additional, additional school choice students. Subtracting, you'd have to really subtract the 13 that are graduating this year, so that is our recommendation, and it certainly doesn't put us at risk. Just so you know, the kindergarten enrollment at this point in time is 123 without additional school choice, so we would be adding that extra kindergarten future to make this happen, and we've had a number of conversations about that.
And really easier to do with the five choice spots if they do get filled, which kindergarten we typically see.
They will be.
That's what I was going to ask.
99.9%, right?
Those ones are likely to be filled versus the other ones, right?
We usually, and kindergarten's the one that we, we always have just enough for more, and we have to do a random poll for students that we accept.
So we would have six class, six kindergarten classrooms?
That's correct.
For 128 students, 22, 23?
22, 23.
Which is kind of about where we were.
Yeah, we've been there for, for a while, and it's doable, and you don't want to get over, I mean, I think 20 to 22, 23 is within that range or span, and we wouldn't want to start seeing us growing more than that without adding more teachers. I mean, that's a, K2 is a pivotal time for students to develop that love of learning, and if you give them those supports with smaller class sizes, it pays off immensely as they go through our district, our system.
All right, any comments or questions?
Yeah, you know, I think the kindergarten ones are likely to get filled, the other ones are, are a little more probabilistic in terms of whether we get those.
Eighth grade might go, because they're transitioning into high school, so that's an opportunity for kids that want, you know, families that want to be part of Littleton's public school system at a crucial time in their child's life, that might happen. I think some of the other ones are a little less likely, especially the 10th, 11th, and 12th grade, unless there's some kind of, you know, aligning issue.
Well, if we have, you know, people being transferred from other parts of the country to work in the area, you know, we could, we could see it in flux there, so it's hard to tell. I mean, we've had a few students last year move into our high school as a, as a result of parents taking jobs in the area, and we had a conversation with somebody just the other day that bought a house in another area, and they just moved here and not realizing what school choice is all about, and they want to send their child, their children to our school system. So sometimes it's a surprise to parents who exist in areas of the country where it's choice for all.
And then during the, over the course of the year, do we, do we usually get enough, you know, puts and, puts and minuses there in terms of new people coming in versus people moving in the middle of the school year that we're?
It balances out, I mean, it's certainly not a constant, you know, it's like this all year long, you know, it's not like this, but it's, you know, a little bit of a up and down, and that's natural for any school system or school district, so nothing that's concerning. You know, considering the law, and the fact that, you know, you really, you don't have a screening process, I think we do a tremendous job with the school choice students that we have, we've been very successful with the students that have come into our system, and they've stayed with us for the most part. So, I mean, that's a real credit to the students and the parents, and, you know, for having good reasons to want to move their children into a new school, it's worthwhile.
Do you need a motion for this, or?
Yes.
By grade, or for?
I think just a motion to accept the recommendation of superintendent.
For school choice seats.
Make a motion to accept the recommendation of superintendent for school choice slots for the 2016, seven, no, 17, 18 school year.
Seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None.
Thank you. I was going to say, while we're on, on this, it's not exactly related, but when I was at the selectmen's meeting a couple of weeks ago, a gentleman in the audience was asking about the upcoming $2 million renovation to Shaker Lane, could, could you talk to me about?
Would you like to talk to, what would you like me to talk about?
Well, I'm just trying to understand where, why people in the community might be getting a perception that we've got a renovation for.
Yeah, I think the issue is, is that there are, during the master plan process, and during the debate on, you know, Alumni Field, the debate on the fire station, the debate on the library, people are having a wide-ranging, you know, evaluation of what are the town's needs going to be as we try to do all of these things and, you know, balance these decisions. And one of the things that's emerging is, Shaker Lane is our oldest school, it hasn't been updated in, what are we up to, 20 years, is it?
1998, I think it was.
1998, so 18 years, you know, and we're growing, we're going to need a new school, we're going to need a bigger Shaker Lane, so I think that, and, not that there's anything wrong with having that discussion, we've had that discussion, we've been talking at length in several meetings, you know, about evaluating what our physical resources are, but we certainly haven't made any move towards renovating Shaker Lane or any other building, or building any other new buildings, or adding wings, it's strictly very preliminary planning purposes, and not even planning, I would say, evaluating.
Right.
Yeah, so.
No, I mean, the reason I bring it up is, is I was, you know, at the meeting, it was directed to the chair, to me, is the school committee representative at the meeting there, and I stated that we are, we are not planning, you know, we have not put a budget request in for that. The other thing that was addressed with was that we're going to replace the building. And again, I'm just trying to understand those, at this point, we are not talking about those types of things there, and they're not on our immediate planning horizons.
They are not, but, you know, it's not a bad thing that people are cognizant of the fact their new houses are going up in town, and as a result of that, we're going to have more kids. So I think that in itself, and the master planning processes, Mike pointed out, it's a, it's a natural progression of conversation, but as a school committee and an administrative team and superintendent, we have not had conversations that we were going to be submitting.
The numbers and timeframes are so specific, that's why I wanted to make sure, you know, I understood, you know, what messaging we're providing as the school committee on these.
Well, if you, I mean, if you, and some of you, I mean, Mike has anyway, I'm sure, have been around when schools have been renovated in this district, that's a, it's a process that takes time and involves the school committee and Board of Selectmen.
The final committee, PMBC.
It can't happen under the table.
No, it can't happen instantaneously, or even, I mean, defined instantaneously, like, within a given school year, no way, no way, you know, it would take, the horizon is two to three years of planning, and then, you know, another year to two of execution.
In fact, I know of two districts in this state that have exhausted the process, and they're just going to build a school out of community cash, because they've been waiting too long, and they, they want to get it done, so it's, it's a process. But I appreciate you bringing that up, Derek.
It's important, if it's.
Well, like I said, those are things that people are talking about, they're asking in public meetings, I wanted to make sure, you know, that I wasn't providing, you know, was providing committees' consensus on, on that.
So if there are other questions on that, we're going to finish off on another real tie, positive conversation. Every year, we develop a slide.
Wait, wait, we got to do, let's do the subcommittee reports first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right, we get them out of the way, and then we will finish with the slide.
Sounds good, finish with the bag.
All right, PMBC?
Let's see, we awarded the contracts for Alumni Field, both the field, the amenities building, and the clerk of the works, which will oversee the day-to-day operations of the thing, of the project, and if I understand what you just told me before the committee meeting here, you've approved the safety plan.
I have.
Back, so that they'll be able to, to continue.
Yeah, we had, there was a kickoff meeting for all the parties that are going to be participating in it, PMBC was there, the school committee, I was there, and Kelly and Steve were there, Park and Rec was there, Town Administration as well. It was a two-hour meeting, mostly about lines of communication, it's very nuts, it was a nuts and bolts meeting between the clerk of the works and the contractors, and how all is going to go, they, clearly they've all been around the track more than once, and they just needed to, you know, make sure they're all understanding what they wanted to do and how they wanted to do it. There was extensive talk about the safety plan, they showed it to us, they handed it off to Kelly and Steve to take a look at, they have reviewed it and signed off on it with some minor additions of what they expect to have happen. The primary contractor, Green Acres, who is in charge, in charge of the bulk of the safety plan in the sense that they will control the work site, and then all the other contractors will be working within that site, so they will adhere to what Green Acres puts forward. The, they are going to come in and start putting the fence down on May 8th is their target date, and then actual construction, you know, demolition, a lot of top soil is going to get taken out, kept in town, but taken off-site, will happen soon, very soon after that. They all seem to think that September 1st was still quite doable, based on what they expect to see. Hopefully, they'll adhere to that. Hopefully, they'll adhere to that, and we'll know more in about a month, I would say, we'll be under, well underway.
And then, I guess, then a question that will probably, that will trip into the school, school department is, the, over the summer, we'll probably need to relocate where the buses are housed and the little trailer that's...
Already, already in motion.
Where's that going to be most, take, change, I could, again, just get a general question about that.
Yeah, so at this point, there's two options, is the other end of the parking lot at Russell Street where it's at now, or we're actually looking at the lower parking lot of the high school. It's two options.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and the other thing that we talked about, Park and Rec is going to make a concerted effort to communicate to athletic organizations that are still going to make use of Wickholm Field, the track area, whatever, what to expect in terms of, because basically, all that parallel parking along Wickholm Field is going to disappear because that's going to become the roadway in and roadway out, because the fencing is going to come right up to where that parking area is. It's not, it's going to be fencing the field, it'll be out into the parking lot. So they are going to communicate with that. And then we talked about communicating to parents that, hey, there is a live construction project going on, you know, please talk to your children about what, you know, expected behaviors are. Certainly, the Russell Street School and Bill Street School staffs will be talking to the students and making them understand. That pathway that they use to, you know, conceivably walk back and forth between the two buildings will not be part of the project, it will still be perfectly fine to be used. We did talk about possibly hiring a temporary crossing guard a couple of times a day for that crosswalk between the middle school and Russell Street, because it is used, and just to make sure the traffic flow is going the way. We'll also talk to the police department, maybe they can help us out, having a patrol officer in that area in the morning and afternoon. So we've got some ideas about, you know, moving forward and mitigating the impact or the potential problems that arising from the fact that we're going to have a construction project going on. We've been through it before in that area, so, you know, I think we'll be fine. The good news is, is, and actually, in some ways, this is good news, we thought we might be able to start in April, it's not, it's going to be May, but now it's only about six weeks of school that we're going to be exposed, of regular school between the two buildings. Russell Street is open in the summer, and, you know, but in some ways, as long as we finish on September 1st, that's actually better than, you know, stringing it out over twelve weeks of school. So, so far, so good. All right, that it for PMBC? Budget Subcommittee, the only thing I would say is, we have town meeting on Monday, so we're going to vote the townwide budget, so anybody's interested should be there for that.
Do you, do you also want to point, just a transactional accounting change we made just a couple of weeks ago?
Which one was that, the?
With the choice and the...
Yeah, what was that?
Yeah, this was, so if, if you remember about Circuit Breaker, we get four payments to Circuit Breaker a year scheduled, and for the last couple of years, we've been getting five payments a year just because of the timing. So this year, there was a shift in the DOR, Department of Revenue Personnel, that certifies the town's free cash, and they picked up on the fact that we had actually carried that fifth payment into last fiscal year because, on a cash basis. So they made us reclass it. So Bonnie and I worked out the details, and really, it's just a shift of funds from Circuit Breaker into School Choice. It's not free money, it's not additional money, it's just a shift in the account that we put it in and took expenses out of. We're still going to spend the money, it's just going to come out of School Choice instead of Circuit Breaker. So it was a hundred and ninety thousand, I forgot the exact change, but a hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
And that was just because we couldn't hold this, hold the money in Circuit Breaker any longer?
Correct, because the statute says you can only hold that money for one year, and DOR is interpreting that. Even though we received the payment like July 4th, they said it was really for the previous year, we should, Bonnie should have booked it for the previous year, but we had, for the last four or five years, booked it that way, and it was accepted by the DOR, so...
And the auditor say you can't do that because it came in.
Well, our auditor didn't have a problem with it, so it's just, it was the DOR interpretation of the regulation and it just...
No impact on the available spending?
There's no impact on the spending, no impact on the available funds. It's just, it's just shifted the balances where we ended FY '16.
Okay. I just figured we should know, so that next year, we're like, oh, why is that not there?
Exactly. Depending on how we show, aberrational.
Right.
Paul, is your Subcommittee?
Nothing to report. I know, I know.
All right, that'll be a hot topic when we reorganize in two weeks.
Matt, get ready.
Yeah. Whoever the new kid on the block is.
Someone gets PMBC, someone gets Policy.
Um, we'll skip executive session tonight, I think, just because of the hour. I do want to remind people, we do have town meeting, May 1st, which is coming Monday, a few days from now. Townwide elections on May 6th, contested races, thank you all for running, and we're always a better town for having contested races, but we do have to contest them, that will be contested on May 6th, so come out and vote. And then we're back here to reconstitute a new committee on May 11th. All right, so a lot going on in the next two weeks.
That will be...
I'll let you know how it goes. All right, but before we adjourn, let's take a look at the slideshow.
All right, here we go.
And this will be shipped to LCTV tomorrow.
If you ever find yourself stuck in the middle of the sea, I'll sail the world to find you. If you ever find yourself lost in the dark and you can't see, I'll be the light to guide Find out what we're made of, when we are called to help our friends in need. You can count on me like one, two, three, I'll be there. And I know when I need it, I can count on you like four, three, two, and you'll be there. Cause that's what friends are supposed to do, oh yeah. If you're tossing and you're turning and you just can't fall asleep, I'll sing a song beside you. And if you ever forget how much you really mean to me, every day I will remind you, oh. Find out what we're made of, when we are called to help our friends in need. You can count on me like one, two, three, I'll be there. And I know when I need it, I can count on you like four, three, two, and you'll be there. Cause that's what friends are supposed to do, oh yeah. You'll always have my shoulder when you cry. I'll never let go, never say goodbye. You can count on me like one, two, three, I'll be there. And I know when I need it, I can count on you like four, three, two, and you'll be there. Cause that's what friends are supposed to do, oh yeah. Ooh, ooh, you can count on me, cause I can count on you.
Well, the song is sure tied into the theme of our focus in our district, a perfect fit. As I've said many times, pictures say a thousand words. When you look at the pictures and what's happening in our district, it's something that we should all be very proud of.
And thanks to Julie Lord for putting that together.
Yes, Julie Lord was the creator of the slideshow this year, did a fantastic job. As I said before, we'll be giving it to LCTV tomorrow to broadcast for the next few days.
Be on the website as well.
We'll be on the website.
All right, any other business? Want to stand a motion adjourn?
Second.
Motion made second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.